This January 6, 2021, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'd like to add a short organizational non-public at the end to begin the process of evaluating the superintendent. We won't get into the details of the evaluation, but to get it set up. I also wanted to mention that we have all received, I think, a very eloquent letter from the Guild indicating that their disappointment that they weren't on the agenda for tonight. Without getting into details about our agenda meeting, I think that clearly the letter indicates information that the board should learn from the Guild. And so Dr. Morse, when I saw the letter, asked Dr. Morse, he was meeting with the leadership of the Guild that afternoon, and in his report, he'll talk about how we can rectify that situation. So he'll say more about that, so we can hear that letter. And I just want to say that, you know, all my career here, I've really respected teachers, and that's the reason that I really joined the board in the first place. And I feel bad that anything that I did indicated disrespect for them or for what they might offer. So hopefully, we can rectify that situation. So with that change, the only change is the non-public. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. All in favor, raise your hands. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. Public comment?
Is that seven?
Seven, zero, yeah. Student rep. Public comment, how many do we have? Two? Okay. You have three minutes?
I told you I was coming back every time. I'm still here. Brooke Keeler from Durham, and two kids in the middle school. And I'm just pulling something up that I'm going to read in a second. So first of all, I just want to express my appreciation and thank you to the administrators and the teachers who've been really reaching out and trying to help me and my family through this difficult time. And I know you guys are all really volunteers and, you know, civil servants. So whether your teachers or administrators are on the board, I just want you to know how much I appreciate you, and that I know that we're all thinking we're doing the right thing. So hopefully, some of us in the community are also just trying to get a couple things done and hold you accountable. So just two quick things. The first one that I've been, I think I bring it up every time I come up here, is about transparency. So it's my understanding that the nurses are going to get up tonight and talk about the criteria. And so what I'd like to know and have published or made public to everybody in the district is, and maybe they're going to go over this when they get up here, but their sources, their process, did they talk to other school districts? Were they open to learnings from those other school districts? Do they look at six-foot rule versus the three-foot in some of the other schools? Sources being extremely important. I'd like to see a statement from Dr. Morse, from the board and the teachers' union around your process through this entire ordeal. What your opinions are, where you stand. Are there Google Sheets out there? Like, how are you guys organizing all this? You must be organizing with a to-do list and people who sit on a particular committee or are trying to work on stuff. Let's just make it all public, so we can all see it if we want. I can't imagine a reason why not to. Hopefully, protect any confidentiality that you would need to, like you would in a medical record, but let's get it public. And then the last thing I just wanted to bring up that I, it came to me while I was listening to the folks from Dover who were speaking to you guys, one thing called confirmation bias, which you may know what that is. I happened to learn about it fairly recently at work, and I'm just going to read the definition and then just leave it at that. So confirmation bias is the tendency to search for, interpret, favor, and recall information in a way that confirms or supports one's prior beliefs or values. People tend to unconsciously select information that supports their views, but ignore non-supportive or contradicting information. People also tend to interpret ambiguous evidence as supporting their existing position. The effect is strongest for desired outcomes for emotionally charged issues and for deeply entrenched beliefs. So I just ask you all on the board and the administration and everybody, check your confirmation bias, and I hope you'll just rely on every possible source, even if it tweaks you in a certain way, to make your decisions moving forward. And hopefully, all the teachers are going to be first in line in March to get their vaccinations, and I'm looking forward to that. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, I'm Gianna Jellicy in Madbury, New Hampshire. I'm going to be reading a letter that was composed today cooperatively with multiple people. This letter has multiple signatories for it, and I'll simply be reading it aloud. All right, so I'm here speaking on behalf of the undersigned today to outline our concerns regarding the proposed reopening model and to offer some suggestions for moving forward. Our primary concern is the health of our children, students, teachers, staff, parents, and other members of our community. Remote learning reduces physical health risks from COVID the most, with some potential loss of some social emotional learning. Some parents, undoubtedly driven by fear and worry for their children, are citing mental health concerns for remote learning as the overwhelming reason to reopen schools. While these concerns are valid, they can be mitigated by other actions, and focusing only on that concern ignores the very real risk of illness and death from COVID. Children are resilient, and with the resources we have available in our privileged community, we can weather the COVID storm better than most. It is up to us, as parents and members of the greater community, to use this situation to teach our children resilience and strength in adversity. These lessons do not necessarily need to be taught in a classroom, and are certainly things that our children are learning to their benefit at home. The importance of emotional and social flexibility that remote learning is instilling in our children cannot be underestimated. While we can all agree that the ideal situation is for our students to be in-person for learning, it is not possible for students to learn if they, their caregivers and family, and their teachers are ill. The simple desire to have our children in school is not a justification to do so. To properly assess and choose a plan of action, we need to use clear metrics that are based on rational scientific data. We need very clear and comprehensive communication from the schools and school board to make rational, intelligent decisions for our family and community with our input. We are grateful that the board has finally consulted with medical and scientific professionals and is considering utilizing the commission created by Dover Schools. A recent Foster's article stated that the Dover superintendent has set a benchmark of 24 or less infections per 100,000 to reopen schools safely. Currently, Durham has a rate of 425 per 100,000 over two weeks, and Stratford County as a whole has a rate of 704 over 100,000 over two weeks. Based upon those numbers alone, now is certainly not the time to reopen schools to any degree. So though we are not swayed by wishful and reactionary thinking, we suggest a phased reopening plan of four stages, ranging from fully remote at phase one to fully open at phase four. These phases need to be tied to benchmarks of community transmission of the virus in conjunction with current infection rate at the school level. Our current plan to open up schooling further when COVID infection rates are skyrocketing in our community seems arbitrary at best. We have never received an answer to why it is necessary to bring children in now. If not now, when is not a valid argument with the pandemic raging. Another alternative would be improve remote learning, but there does not appear to be an actual plan in place to do so. Are there children who are struggling, who could benefit from more hands-on learning, who are not being helped currently? Are we unable to do so with our current model? If the main concern is socialization of students, we can make more of an effort to have outdoor learning opportunities, especially in the form of after-school clubs. Under COVID rules, the ability to socialize in an in-person interior environment is very limited. The cost-benefit analysis here is nebulous at best. The current model for reopening is problematic on these lines, particularly at the middle school level. The proposed model increases asynchronous learning time while not clearly defining the benefit of the limited in-person day. The full day is also problematic, as it necessitates a lunch period. It is unequivocally known that eating indoors is a source for COVID transmission. One of the reasons that the hybrid model is successful at the elementary school level is likely due to consistent mask-wearing and having no situations where students or staff are indoors without masks on.
Your time is about up.
I'm almost done. Transition.
Okay.
In summary, we would like to have a plan to get children back into the classroom that respects science, the reality of the pandemic, and the current logistical situation. We need a phased plan that is clear, concise, and based upon measurable benchmarks. We need to go back to in-person learning and planned phases as COVID case load decreases and immunity through vaccination increases. We have none of those things at this time, and therefore should pause the current plan on reopening the schools. This letter has been sent to the school board with the signatures underneath for your perusal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That it? Approval of the minutes? Have a motion to approve the December 16 minutes? Denise?
So moved.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Are there corrections that haven't been given to Wendy?
Well, if there are corrections that have been given to Wendy, we should.
Know what they are, okay.
We should hear those two.
Yeah, yeah. Are there corrections? How's that?
I had a correction. And just as a comment, I find that the minutes have a lot of focus on what is presented in a document and misses some important pieces that come up in discussion. So I wanted to add, after the middle school presentation and the sentence, "A lengthy discussion ensued," and the board.
What page are you on?
That is a good question. Do you know, Wendy?
The bottom of page eight, just above.
Thank you.
The motion by Al.
"A lengthy discussion ensued, and the board asked Jay clarifying questions, which he answered." I have a couple sentences, and it also mentions others here, since I reviewed the video. UC said it's important to make clear in our communications to families that even though they will be asked to answer the survey in January, we are not talking about definitely returning in person on January 26. Todd and Jay confirmed that we are preemptively reassigning students' sections at the start of Q3 to make it easier to switch to in-person instruction when the board decides to return. Michael and Al emphasize that parents should know what the criteria are for returning to school in person before they complete the survey.
Okay, so that's to be added.
That is three, and I would, of course, ask for the support from the people who said these things.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that the only change?
Yes.
Okay. With that change, do we have a vote to approve? Do we have the motion? We do. Okay. All those in favor of the minutes with that change? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? From the board? Denise?
I've said before, I'm a huge fan of the mouth of the river, and I particularly want to commend the students for this fall issue during the pandemic for still putting out a great news magazine.
Denise?
A quick comment on communication, just encouraging us to continue the focus on our communication. In this case, how the district communicates to parents about upcoming hybrid options. Yesterday, there was an email to middle school families that said the transition to an in-person hybrid model will happen on January 26, perhaps, that's what Gianna was responding to, and asked parents to choose remote or in-person. People who watch our school board meetings would know that this transition and choice will be more nuanced, that likely the school will not be in person on January 26, that we want parents to know our criteria for opening before they have to commit, and that we are discussing those topics tonight. But our email didn't say this, and so many families thought that January 26 was the date that we, the board, had decided students would return in person. This isn't the end of the world, there will be a follow-up explanation, but it was an unforced error at a sensitive time. And I guess I'm encouraging us to put ourselves in the shoes of parents who don't watch school board meetings whenever we communicate. We have to anticipate parents' range of reactions and concerns, and explain our rationale and share as many details as we know before we ask them to make any decisions. Maybe we need a parent or a professional to review BLAS first, from a parent's point of view. Maybe we need the public statement that Brian requested last year. Everyone in this district is working so hard. I feel personally very good about the board's decisions recently and the trajectory that we're on, and a bit more attention to our communication will make a big difference in how the community views us and how it comes together.
Okay. Thank you. Are there comments? Okay, we have the unanimous consent, one item on the unanimous consent. So could I have a motion to approve the unanimous consent? Brian?
Motion approved.
Moved by Brian, second by Denise.
Can I just read? I hate to be like a stickler, but when you make the motion, can we read what the?
Okay.
Just a friendly thing, the motion is to approve the list of ORMS clubs and activity stipends.
Okay.
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, Al. Okay, ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. That's approved. Assistant superintendent's report? Okay. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. I've got a number of things before we get to the heart of the matter tonight in terms of the criteria the nurses have ready and Suzanne's proposed model. I want to take a moment of silence. The number of people who have died in this country due to COVID has finally reached Oyster River. We've had a staff member's mother pass away this week, and we also had a recent retiree's mother pass away this week, both due to COVID. So if you just take a few seconds to send them positive thoughts, I'd appreciate that. I also want to share with the board, thank you for that, I also want to share with the board that the superintendent in Portsmouth and myself and the superintendent in Exeter have written an editorial from our perspective as superintendents, not from the perspective of our respective school boards, on civility. And, you know, thinking about what's happened in Washington, D.C. today, I think it couldn't be more timely. The last time I was impacted by the news as much as I was today was 911. A woman lost her life today. We don't know the circumstances yet. To see those images splashed across the screen, to see our Capitol occupied by angry mobs was more than disconcerting. And I do think it fits into the issue of civility and public discourse. We are proud Americans. We're proud of our democracy. We're proud of how we talk to each other and have informed discussions, and we can disagree without being disagreeable. And I think that happens here at the local level, as well as what we're seeing on a national level. I thought the two speakers this evening represented civility. They did a great job in getting their points across without being demeaning, demoralizing, or attacking. I think that we have to find our way back to civility as a country. That's what we're about. We have to remember that we're an empathetic nation, as well as a civil nation. Now, democracy depends on us remembering who we are as a country and as a people. And I'm sorry for that political statement, but I thought it was important to put out there, as I did on 911. In terms of communication, based on whatever decisions the board makes tonight, we'll be putting out a comprehensive newsletter next week addressing the decisions tonight and also the middle school. It is, I was talking to a parent today, if Suzanne's model was approved and Jay's model is approved, and the implementation date was today, I would be recommending against opening school. I think that the importance of tonight is to publicly disclose, as Brooke alluded to, what are the criteria we're using, and to make sure the public understands it. Doesn't necessarily mean the public will agree with it, but we will share it and we'll be very open about it. I also want to make sure in this article that we talk about the criteria that we've asked parents to review before they send their children to school. Now, I'm going to be very blunt here. All but two of the cases that we dealt with in October and November and December were due to what I would call COVID fatigue, where people, grown-ups, let their guard down. And so the transmission into our schools was because people didn't go through the checklist, they didn't take it seriously, or they didn't have time that particular day because they were in a hurry. And as a result, you know, we ended up closing classrooms, we ended up closing pet programs, we ended up closing sports programs. So the importance of our parents faithfully going through that on a daily basis is so critical to us being able to keep our schools open. So I ask our parents tonight, I plead with them, please go through the checklist as your child is being asked to enter the school, so we can keep the school open once the board has made that decision. I also want to put out tonight that our budget card, and Michael will remember this because we've had this conversation before, so this is going to be a COVID-related issue. Wendy put the cards out in plenty of time to get them into the homes in a timely manner. The print shop had COVID issues, and so they are in the mail today. But I want to make sure that the public knows, and we will remind the public through school messenger, that our public hearing on the budget is next week. So this should arrive in people's homes in time, but if it doesn't, we're going to take the time to remind the community that that public hearing is next week. And then the Guild letter, and I too felt that the Guild letter was amazingly detailed, and I appreciate the fact that they took the time to send it. And, you know, we have about 415 employees as a school system, and the teachers represent fully half of those employees. And, you know, they are on the front lines, and they are doing the work that we've asked them to do in the midst of a pandemic, and they have done yeoman's work. I totally support their request to speak to the school board. I know that they have incredible insights into how the fall and the first part of the winter went, and they are sending a cadre of teachers to do this presentation. And when I talked to leadership, they were more than willing to come on the 20th, and I just, I really can't say how much I respect our professionals and the work they're doing during this, you know, unusual time. So that I will be asking Michael and Tom to put on the agenda. So that gets us to the, really, the crux of the matter tonight. I do want to introduce our nurses, Todd and Catherine, if you gear up our crew. Our nurses have been amazing throughout the summer and the fall and to this date. They have taken on a role that they never planned on taking on as school nurses. They never thought that they would be the front line of a pandemic. There was no way for them to predict the workload and the extra time they put in. The COVID plan that we have, you know, again, I'll go back to what Brooke said in terms of referencing documents. We referenced hundreds of documents over the course of the summer in public newsletters in terms of why we built the COVID plan the way we did, why we chose six-foot distancing, and so forth. And, you know, it's one of those situations where it's sort of like you repeat, you repeat, and you repeat again. And I couldn't ask more of the school nurses as a superintendent than they have given. They're in calling parents at 8 o'clock at night, doing contact tracing. The state itself is so overwhelmed that the front line of contact tracing is now the schools when it happens on a school environment. I do not want anyone to leave feeling I am dissing the DHHS. They are working hard, but the pandemic in the state has taken a very dangerous direction, and they are overwhelmed. So I am proud to introduce our nurses tonight, and Todd and Catherine have worked with them to prepare them. They are not public speakers, they're nervous as all get out to speak in front of you guys, but they deserve our recognition and applause.
First of all, I do want to start by saying we are very fortunate to have very capable graduates of Oyster River High School that are available to assist us in times of crisis. Megan Harvey, who was the epidemiologist that's been working with the city of Dover, is actually a graduate of Oyster River High School from the late '90s, you know, a really bright, capable, and talented young lady. And she has very kindly agreed to work with us, should we choose to adopt any element of the metric that Dover created and that you asked us to review, to help us personalize it to Oyster River and to make it something that will be useful to us. Okay? You should have in your folder, there is a, in fact, thank you, Megan, for creating this sample report. This was the report based on the data that was available as of December 22nd, and it's, you know, made for Oyster River School District. We're going to present this in, obviously, more detail in just a moment, but assuming that we get approval from the board, our intention would be using the COVID page on our website. We would publish this every Monday with the accurate numbers for the community and for us to work from. In addition, we would also publish on that same place a dashboard of the case counts by building, by the number of professionals, as well as students, and the number of students and professionals that are experiencing quarantine-related factors. And we will also publish directly from the DHHS website the community case counts for the cities of Durham, Lee, Madbury, and then we'd also include Barrington and Dover, because Barrington kids obviously come to Oyster River High School, and Dover is a place where we're sending kids for a career tech. So we'll put all those points on, and that would be the basis for us moving forward to review the data every week and to make determinations and recommendations for how to move forward. A couple of things that weren't said at the last meeting when the Dover people were here talking about their metric is exactly how they align their metric to their models. And this model is created around, the high end of the metric is for completely remote instruction. The medium-risk part of the metric would be what we are commonly calling kind of remote with targeted instructors or some form of a hybrid that's not bringing all kids in. And the low end of the metric would be for a model that allows for full participation of students, obviously removing out students that families would choose to not have them, but it would be on the assumption that at the low end of the metric, we are able to bring people into the building. It's just a question of, you know, what we can manage as a community. So again, assuming that, after we present tonight, the board likes this idea, we would move forward with this metric and presenting it in public. And so I'm going to turn it over to Catherine, who's going to talk a little bit about the process that the nurses went through.
So before we get into bringing our nurses up, and I just want you all to know that we are going to bring them up as they present some slides, we're going to bring them up separately. We are trying to obviously keep them safe and quarantined because they are our frontline workers in our buildings, keeping our students and staff safe. So we will, there'll be a little bit more time probably, just to allow people to transition back and forth. So in terms of a process, what we did after the last board meeting is we meet as a nursing department every week. The nurses talk every day. Todd or I, or Dr. Morse, talk with them, one of them or more of them, every single day. But we meet every week, and we meet as a department to talk about issues that we're having, consistency, things that we need to educate students, staff, and families about, kind of all of those things. And what we did was we did meet as a department and reviewed the metric as a department, and we were asked to kind of identify critical elements from that metric that we think are very important for us in ORCSD to take into account when we're determining whether we need to close or whether we can open more. So we took a lot of time. The metric that was provided to us from Megan Harvey, who was an epidemiologist, cites those sources. We've reviewed those sources. Also, as a district, we've used most regularly, obviously, resources. Also, as a district, we've used most regularly, obviously, resources that are provided to us from DHHS and the CDC as well as Johns Hopkins. So those are areas that we commonly review when we're making decisions about healthcare safety guidelines. All of our healthcare and safety guidelines and documents that we work from are on the website, and sources are cited there as well, just for folks who want to know a little bit more about that. So what we have done here is we have identified six areas from the metric that we found to be the most critical elements when we're looking at how COVID is impacting our decision-making. And each nurse is going to come up and review that section with you. One thing that I do ask, if it's okay, is if you just kind of jot questions down as they go, and we wait until the end to ask any questions, if that's okay? Because I think that'll allow us to get through the presentation, and then we can take questions at the end. Okay? So I think other than that, the last thing I want to point out is that, as a reminder, we do have a governance committee that also meets weekly. The governance committee was identified last school year, and we've been meeting every week, even throughout the summer. And we meet again every week, and the nursing department and the governance committee work hand in hand. When we discuss something in the nursing department meeting, we bring it to governance, and we bring it to leadership so that everyone is always on the same page. Okay? So our first section we're going to talk about tonight is contact tracing. So I'm going to invite Erin Passay and Lucy Garfield up. Erin is our school nurse at Oyster River Middle School, and Lucy is what we have called our float nurse, and she's currently supporting all the schools. She floats between all the schools. So sometimes parents will hear from Lucy.
Good evening. I'm Lucy. I'm the float nurse. I have the opportunity to integrate myself in all the schools. So I'm just going to take this opportunity to really highlight contact tracing. That's become a huge part of our role in the COVID-19 world. Contact tracing, time and time again, has proven to be very, very important in mitigating the spread of diseases. COVID is no exception to that. So it's really important for us to have those resources and the supports to be doing effective contact tracing so that we can identify contacts, to isolate and quarantine them so that we don't have more spread. So this is just building off of the contact tracing idea. This is, so, the R value is the reproductive value for COVID-19. That is indicating how many people, on average, an infected person will infect. The R value for COVID-19 is actually two to three. So this is on the optimistic end of things, and it's easy to see how quickly one infected person can turn into a much bigger cluster. I think that's all I have on that.
Hi, I'm Erin Passay, the middle school. Let me just switch this slide here. I am not tech savvy nor a public speaker. There we go. So this is also in tandem with the continuation of contact tracing. We wanted to show you, it's actually a great visual just to, this is an infectious period for one single person who's been infected. I guess what we were hoping to have the visual for was to show that the tricky part of COVID-19, when we are, if we are able to contact trace effectively, we are able to hopefully mitigate the, a contact person, to allow them to come home, like Lucy was saying, they could come home and isolate appropriately so that there's not a continuum of spread. This is showing just a single infectious period for one infected person. Like I said, the tricky person, the tricky thing about COVID-19 is that we actually have a window of opportunity where there's two days of typically, two days of asymptomatic, two days, two days that some person could be asymptomatic prior to starting to have symptoms and identify symptoms that they're even ill to begin with, that they can pass the virus on to somebody else. When we are able to contact trace effectively, we can stop, we can close that window quickly. When we were unable to contact trace effectively, unfortunately, that's when we do have the greater spread, the larger spread. Currently, as the state identifies it, in early phases of pandemic, such as the start of the beginning of our school year, contact tracing is a really effective way to mitigate spread. However, as we've surged on and our numbers have increased, no longer, the state, although they're trying their best to help us, no longer is the state able to help contact trace effectively. They actually turn their efforts to other places, increasing testing sites, availability of testing, and so forth, so that we can, that in those ways help to mitigate. Now that we are in a surge, we are, of course, doing contact tracing on our own here at the school level. They're helping as best they can, but with smaller groups. And I'll just show you a quick second slide. It's the same visual as the first one, where you can see the first infected person, now to the contact of that infected person. The dark orange just shows the window of opportunity, and that's like, it's the two days of asymptomatic spread, unfortunately for this virus that has been identified. You don't want me to go over the notes bit? I will say too, and this will be reiterated, and I believe in one of the last slides, because we're in the phase that we're in, which is the high risk based on the rubric that is in front of you for potential approval, we have many barriers to our contact tracing currently, as you could imagine, at this point because of the timeline of the pandemic. We have misinformation to parents and community members, potential, excuse me, some, I think, because of the misinformation, maybe even on social media or within our community, we don't necessarily have transparency also too from parents and guardians and community members. We try to do our best with the information that we're given, but we have to remember that this is all protected health information as well too. So none of this needs to come to us, but we just hope that we continue to have transparency with our parents and community members. We mentioned already about as the state not being necessarily able to help. An interesting point, which I think is something that many people don't realize, or many community members don't realize, is that we, the state will assist with students if they have reported a positive student, if the state has had a positive student reported to them, they will help assist us with what we need from contact tracing. However, it falls about five to seven days out currently. The beginning of the school year, we were right on top of things, but now it's five to seven days late. Another interesting bit, however, though, is that if we have a parent in a home, or now we're seeing homes where really everyone in the home, whether we have as a parent, it starts as a parent, it starts with a child, the majority of those family members, unless they're able to appropriately isolate or leave the home altogether, we're seeing the whole family come down with the illness, of course, over a period and span of time. When a parent becomes ill, that is not an indication for the state to then assist us. So that's just an interesting component. We have actually had more parents, family members, in our community that have become ill first before a child, but we are also working to contact trace to help the family, regardless that it's not their student. And then I think that might be it for the notes bit. Many of, many of the slides that you'll see, in addition to these, play a major role in affecting our ability to contact trace. Thank you.
I am the nurse at Mastway School. Nice to see you all. Thank you for being here. I'm sorry that you're having to do this. I'm going to talk about the testing availability, and then my counterpart Sheila, who's at Moheramit, is going to talk about the time to the test results and how those two things are impacting us at school. Right now, we're finding that the time to, the testing availability is not as great as it was in September. So in September, you know, if a parent needed testing for their child, they pretty much popped over to convenient MD, and on that day, they were swabbed and sometimes even got a rapid test if they were symptomatic, and on the same day, knew the results. Most of the testing now, where we'd be in what we would consider a much more difficult level on that little sheet of paper that you have with the pinks and the yellows, or I don't know what colors those are, sorry. It looks like pink and yellow to me from here, but we're more in the higher range of testing availability, what we would call the higher critical. So it is more difficult to get symptomatic testing. And so, I mean, I'll give you an example of something that happened right before Christmas, which, you know, just sort of put a wrench in a lot of people's styles, and, I mean, obviously, we don't tell you the names of kids, so we are going to use the name Millie for today. And Millie is five, and I have to put it in a plug for teachers, by the way. They are doing a phenomenal job with this six-foot thing. I mean, it would be like me putting cats in here and asking you to keep them six feet apart, you know? And it's amazing to me what the teachers have done. They have done a great job, but the kids are five. So Millie's mom did not feel well. She assumed she had a cold and couldn't get COVID tested because there wasn't any testing available, so she sent Millie to school. And then on Monday, finally got her COVID test, and indeed, she did have COVID. And Millie had been at school all day with the other five-year-olds, I mean, as well as we can, six feet apart. But then, so what happens next is she calls me on Tuesday morning and says, so, I really assumed I didn't have COVID, but unfortunately, I did, and I sent Millie to school yesterday. And she said, and only to make it a little bit better, today, Millie has the same symptoms that I do. And so, of course, inside, you're feeling quite distressed on a couple of levels. First of all, cute little Millie is sick. Secondly, her mom doesn't feel good. Third, I now have a whole classroom of kids that I'm not really totally sure about, and as much as we've really, really tried, I would feel terrible if I didn't at least let the families know about it. So I said, well, so you'll take Millie to get a test, and then we'll know whether she really has COVID or not, because you'd want to know, right? If the kid in your class had COVID. She goes, yes, that sounds like a great idea, except I already called, and the soonest I can get her tested is Friday. And this is Tuesday morning. So now, in the class, I have Travis and Andy, and I have to call up both Brian and Tom five days before Christmas and say, I'm really sorry, but there's a five-year-old in Travis's class who appears to have symptoms of COVID. I can't promise you because we can't get him tested. So you don't really know whether or not you should go to Christmas because I don't really know the answer. And so, of course, you're now thinking in your brain, like, what do you want me to do with my kid? And I'm saying, actually, I want you to keep him home and keep your eye on him because I don't know whether or not he has COVID. And I'm sure Tom is thinking, okay, I'm supposed to be going to Christmas now, but what am I supposed to be doing with Andy? And I'm like, well, you can't, he's like, how about if I get him tested? You can't get him tested because it's too soon. We have to wait, there's no way he would have it yet, so you're going to have to wait at least five days, which when you do the math out is December 24th. And so you're thinking you'd like to get tested, get him tested, but you don't really know if you even need him to get tested. So it causes this huge unrest for the entire class and a whole bunch of families when there isn't testing available for even the symptomatic people. And so that's really where we're at right now with the testing. So then, when you finally get your time to get tested, we then have this little lag that's called the test result time. And I will leave that story to Sheila.
Hi, I'm Sheila. I'm the nurse at Moheramit. So I'm going to talk about the turnaround time for testing, so what happens when we're waiting. The sheets that you're looking at right now, it's, the red zone is above 48 hours as a turnaround time. When we came in in August, our turnaround time was under 24 hours, and that depended on whether people are getting rapid tests or PCR tests, which take a few days to come back. But depending on where you are, some of them can still come back within 24 hours. So this affects our school, our district, all of the schools in a couple different ways. The first, like Catherine was talking about, it can create a general sense of unrest and anxiety, just not knowing. That's not something we can quite control, but what it does affect in our buildings is our staffing and our, our students' ability to come back. So if they, say, I have a student who has the sniffles, they come down with the sniffles during school one day, I send them home, they go home, they get a COVID test that, maybe that afternoon, but maybe, like in Catherine's case, they're not able to get a test for two days, and then that result doesn't come back for another three days, and it comes back negative. That student's now been out for five days. So it really affects them on a greater level, which then affects the parents, and the same goes for the staff. If a staff member is not feeling well, but, and they're supposed to be out for any symptom, they might be out for five days, for seven days, instead of just one. So that's part of why that's kind of divided in that way of the effect. The other way that that really affects us is the ability, it increases our risk. If we're at that 48-hour turnaround time, our risk level is way up because it's harder to keep our buildings safe. By the time I'm notified, or any of us, any of the health offices are notified, that we have a student who tested positive, they might have tested positive four days ago and been in the building that day, and then we need to go back the two days prior. And so, for example, all the children that they were in a cohort with four days ago have now been in the building for four days. So it increases exponentially each day that they are then in the building. So that 48-hour time really, every day increases, if I'm saying that clear. And it, the last kind of impact that that has is that as the time increases, the impact of every positive case will increase. So if I have a positive case, but I have a quick turnaround time, and I know where they were yesterday, and I can, like Erin talked about with the contact tracing, if I can kind of put a stop to it that day, then the effect is smaller. But if it's been four days before I can stop it and contact trace, then that student has probably seen a specialist, they might have had an encore teacher in their classroom, they might have, they might have after-school care that they wouldn't have been at, you know? Each day, it grows, and the effect is greater. I do not know how to, nope. Well, I did it.
My name is Kim Wolf. I am the registered nurse at Oyster River High School. So this slide relays another area of priority that would be reviewed frequently. So what is the current transmission rate in Stratford County? What are the case counts in Durham, Lee, Madbury, Barrington, and Dover for our CTC students? What is the current case count within each school? What is the percent positive? So as you can clearly see in the slide, high risk, medium, low risk. So of note, all of the state data is available online for public viewing. They update it frequently. All of the data from this slide would be reviewed at the weekly governance committee meeting, which has a building leadership, SAU, et cetera. And nurses would still continue to speak with Dr. Chan two to three times each week, depending on the week. There are different meetings that we have, or different calls that we have with him. And we would report back to governance with any important or pertinent data. And just to say one last thing to all the parents and guardians, it is imperative, if we are talking about increasing the numbers within the building, that the pre-entry questionnaire is done every single day before the start of the school day, before the child is in the building. Thank you.
Just to highlight one more thing before Todd takes the next slide, is that, as a reminder, the data, remember, that is being compiled based on the metric is all public data. So when Megan is gathering that data, it's data that exists through our Department of Health and Human Services. So it's all very accessible, and that's why she's noted sources, so that you all can see where she pulls this data from in terms of interpreting each category on that metric system. So Todd's going to talk about staffing, and then we'll start summarizing.
So the one criterion that we added to our metric was staffing capacity, because, and actually, in talking with Dover, they contemplated including it themselves, but then decided to stick with more external tracking mechanisms. We feel that we can track it pretty well internally. We have a lot of data that's being tracked anyway, so we feel that our administrators can stay on top of it and regularly review it, and quite frankly, can't run a school without knowing what your staffing is. So it's a daily thing that you're thinking about. Things to be aware of when we start talking about staffing capacity. Obviously, you've got to have adequate staff to provide whatever the model is. So obviously, even if you're just doing targeted learners, you have to have enough of the special education staff, the tutors, the people that are working with students need to be available to do that. Or consequently, you also have to have substitutes available to be able to provide for that. So our ability to be able to meet that is essential. You know, the thing about staffing is, and actually, in a college town, it's always interesting, our availability of subs often ties into the schedule of the university, and it goes up and down depending on, you know, like Fridays, we have lots of subs available sometimes just because there's students trying to work their schedules tonight, have classes on Fridays, so they tend to have more subs available. So there are certain days of the week that we can provide more coverage. That's in normal times. In COVID times, though, we have to be more careful, because we don't want to just bring random people into the building without making sure that we're doing everything we can to control for their exposure. So what we have done, and obviously, you've approved a number of paraprofessional hires to allow us to have consistent subs that we just simply move within our system, but it allows us to know that they're not working in multiple school systems and so forth. But clearly, that's an issue. When we start to look at staff capacity, though, keep in mind that there's COVID, and there's all the people that are out because either they tested positive for COVID, or they were exposed to somebody who did, and they're in quarantines. But then there's also people who have normal things that happen that happen all the time. I mean, it's cold and flu season. You can have a family emergency that causes you to be out. So it is a highly variable thing. And so, it's important to keep in mind that that's something that we track on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis continuously. We're constantly trying to get our sublists up and keep those as substantial as we can. And then, really, kind of the key to this variable in the metric would be that, like I say, we are tracking through our employee self-serve, who's coming, who's out for various reasons. We are tracking, the nurses are tracking the COVID-related data, so we are tracking that. But again, principals are very aware of what their staffing issues are, and obviously, if we have multiple buildings that are having staffing issues, then it becomes very difficult to run a system. This is a good time, I know Jim has mentioned this multiple times, but David and Misty have been amazing in creatively figuring out ways to keep themselves open. But obviously, the more issues that come up, the hotter it becomes. And just before the holidays, there was one day where, I think Misty said she had 14 people out, and when you're trying to run a school that only has, I think, you know, 20 or so staff, that's a lot. But she was able to do it and kept the school running with herself subbing in a class or two. So anyway, so that's the one category we added that Dover metric did not include.
So just to kind of summarize and highlight what's been working well, obviously, our students, our staff, and our nursing department has been very consistent with our CSC health and safety guidelines. Our nurses continue to provide lots of education. They continue to speak in faculty meetings. They are visible in the building, so they can observe things and provide more education, and things have been very consistent within our district. The other thing that was working well prior to winter break was, we were able to maintain some staffing based on the incredible attendance we had from our teachers, educators, drivers, and all other personnel. But things started to impact all of those professionals, and that's when we eventually did have to close. The barriers, of course, incomplete info to accurately contact trace. Erin did touch on this earlier. We don't always have all of the info, and sometimes, we're chasing it. And by the time we get the info we need, it's a little bit too late. So we do have to close more frequently than we would like to. The lack of the support from the DHHS, again, this is, they're overwhelmed. They are not in a position to really appropriately support school systems. They continue to push out documents and tools, and Dr. Chan continues to make himself available for consults and webinars, but they just are not able to support us in an effective way. I've sat in a nurse's office while they were on hold for over 20, 30 minutes several times, and we just aren't able to get that support. The governor did say over the break that they would continue to support schools and also provide more rapid available testing for school employees and students, but we unfortunately have not seen that yet. My suspicion is because the vaccine is now here, and they're using staff to coordinate that. But we don't really have that support yet. Increasing students may increase time to contact trace. Again, we would likely see more stops and starts. So if we increase students, you've probably noticed many districts have stopped and started for a couple of days to allow the contact trace. We would have to do that. We will be able to contact trace up to a point, but there's some times we just have to close, take inventory, do a very good job, and then reopen, if that's the case. We have unreliable testing timeframes. There's been an increase, obviously, in the percent of tests positive due to the current surge and the staffing shortages that will increase, that will impact the increasing of students. So we'll have more staff out as we have more kids in. It's just, we're going to have more sick people. We just have to be real about that. So lastly, as a summary, these are the six categories that we found as the critical elements as a department. Contact tracing, which is currently done by school nursing staff and administration. It's become inherently more difficult, even with the small populations we have in some of the schools, and we've talked about DHHS already. Testing availability and time to test. You know, we're going to need to assess, again, over the next 14 days to see if testing does become more available for school employees and students, as promised by the governor. I just don't, we haven't seen it yet. It's too early to tell if it's going to be available. Transmission and percent of positives. Kim already explained all of this, but clearly, if we're in a high critical risk category, we really should be staying in a remote learning setting. If we're at a medium risk, the hybrid learning, and what does that look like with our targeted learners, and then our models already in place? And then, low risk. And staffing. So Todd reviewed this impacted by illness, by isolation and quarantine, and then, obviously, impacted by other events that staff have. So some staff have personal, you know, other medical appointments. We've had a number of daycare closures that also directly impact, you know, all of us parents and staff. So that's really it for our six areas. Todd's going to jump in.
So really, what we would recommend, kind of moving forward, is the six areas that Catherine has just outlined would be the priority focus areas that we would look at. But we would recommend adopting the metric the way that it's been presented to you tonight, with the staff capacity added to it, with the knowing that we are going to create a COVID dashboard that will track COVID cases in quarantines at all schools for staff and students every day, in addition to community case counts, with the idea that this information will be reviewed every, really continuously, but specifically every Monday at our district governance committee meeting to determine what the best path forward is for us as a district. So with that, we'd be happy to take any questions. Denise, yes?
First of all, I want to definitely thank the nurses, both for their presentation, but also for the amazing amount of work. I cannot imagine, you know, calling the parents of all these children and saying, "Well, your child may or may not have been exposed." And so, thank you so much. My simple question I have is, have you received the vaccine yet as part of medical? You have not. Any word on when? Because I understand we're a school, but you're a medical provider, so to me, you should fit in this top category.
Yeah, yes, it is offered to, the rollout is just beginning, but school nurses are part of Phase 1A. So some have, some school nurses in New Hampshire have already received the vaccine, and others have an appointment scheduled.
So I have a question about the six categories. What if you had, like, some at low risk, some at high risk, some at middle risk? I mean, it seems like there's a judgment call in here somewhere, because, you know, if everything had to be low risk to get to, like, 50%, you know, you might never, ever get there. So I just wonder how you figured that out?
Well, I think, I guess I would go back and quote Megan from when she was here, talking, you know, she talked about choosing from the best of two bad options. I mean, I do think that you're absolutely right. It's not an absolute standard. I think we will review it as a governance committee to see how all of the, because all of these factors interact with each other in various ways. So obviously, if there's significant community case counts, but they haven't actually shown up in the schools, and they're not impacting us, our ability within the school to provide a program, we might be less inclined to look at that and more inclined to look at something else. So it isn't an absolute, so there isn't, like, a number that we would say, if it's three of these categories in the high risk, we're automatically in the high risk. I think it requires us to review it, and, like I say, trusting that we have a really capable and talented nursing staff and a district governance team that's been on this since last March, kind of reviewing things and allow us to make those judgment calls. But you're absolutely right. There are judgment calls, and certainly, depending on the significance of any one factor, that one might be enough. Like, quite frankly, the staffing one is the one that I think we're most, it's most cut and dry. It's easy to say, "We have enough, or we don't." Everything else is kind of a relative comparison, and these, this guideline gives us a place to start in our thinking. Yes, yeah?
So my question actually is on the hybrid versus the 50%. So the, tonight, we're going to look at, like, the high school model, a potential one for February 1st, and we've already approved a middle school one. So where do the, are they the hybrid, or are they the 50%? What exactly are the ones that we're approving?
Well, if we're bringing in less than all of our students, that would be a hybrid model. So as long as we're, because I guess the other factor to lay on top of this, just as something to be aware of, is we do have the MOA, and we do have our reopening plan that does put in place guidelines that we have. So for the most part, we're probably living in that hybrid model until we can 100% bring everybody back.
So the only reason I'm bringing that up is because it's, right now, of course, we're, it's pretty easy when you're in the highest risk to say, you know, "It's not acceptable." But the real question is, you know, as we begin to look at a timeframe, and parents are thinking like, "Well, are we going to go back? What exactly is the criteria?" I think it's probably unlikely, at least for a while, that we'll make our way down to the lowest risk level. And so, the question would be, is if we're under a medium-risk scenario, would we be able to open up the middle school and the high school? And actually, even the elementary would fall under the same thing. So I was just trying to clarify that.
Right. You know, I think, again, it is a judgment call that we would have to make. I think, you know, thinking in terms of, like, where, when are we medium or low? The odds are pretty good that as spring approaches, we'll have more outdoor options. We'll have a lot of other variables, so that we may be able to tolerate some of the medium-range things more so when the outdoors is part of our option. In the winter months, though, when you're limited for spaces and everybody's inside, obviously, that's where you have to maybe adhere a little more significantly to these.
Yeah, I mean, I, so I think, by the way, it's a really great idea to put the metric on the website. I think the hardest part for parents is they're unsure where we're going, and they don't have any, anything, you know, hang their hat on where we're moving. And so, by clearly identifying what our levels are, and also by publishing it, it allows the parents right now, they can begin to, I mean, you can go to the state website, but this would be so much easier.
Yeah.
And it allows them to kind of anticipate, and there's a real thing to hang your hat on. Is it really realistic, February 1st, we'll do it or not?
Well, I do think one of the things, you bring up a great point, Alan. That's actually something that we've been also talking about, is kind of shifting our communication strategy. You probably have seen that whenever we've had a COVID positive, we've sent out a district communication, and there have been days when we've sent out three, four, five of them. And at some point, you ask yourself, "What are we accomplishing in this communication?" And so, one of the things we've talked about trying to do is by having the website that has the data, and trying to be more transparent about our thinking as we go along. I mean, I would envision Dr. Morse making, you know, regular reports at the board level in terms of what are the variables that we're particularly struggling with this week versus, you know, and being very open about it, and trying to push that information out on a regular basis. Because I agree, I think that's one of the things that we've heard from community members, is being something that's been very frustrating, is what's the point that's going to get us there? So we have to, we can use the language of the metric to be able to articulate that as we move forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's the same thing my wife gets at when we're Douglas. So it's like, she gets like this pop-up that tells, like, how many people are in the ICU, and it gives them kind of a time, they get a sense, like, "Oops, we're really going in a bad direction." No, it's actually getting a little bit better. So I think it'll be really, really helpful for parents.
Regarding some of the metrics here, the, I know you didn't flag hospital capacity as a key metric for us. I think it's important to note that while ICU utilization is high, the vast majority of ICU beds that are in use are not related to COVID. It's flu season, and that's the way it happens most years. The one that you did highlight that I'm a little bit, I'm not unsure about, is the contract tracing metric, partly because of the, you know, practicality of it. If we're at 4%, and actually, according to Dover this week, we're at 3%, that means we need 15 times more contact tracers, or a 90-something percent reduction in caseload before we can even get to medium. So I don't know if that's really a practical, of a practical significance for us. Beyond that, I really agree with the metrics that you've chosen to highlight.
Michael, can I address the contact tracing?
Sure.
I think you're right. I mean, this is a numerical representation, and no one knows numbers better than you in terms of what they can share and what they can't share. I think in a practical sense, the way I look at the contact tracing is that the minute that our nurses cannot keep up, that's when we're in a high. You know, the nurses have been working in the evenings and on weekends in order to stay on top of the contact tracing, but when they say, "We can't do it," then that's a high. And I think if we can't do contact tracing, that's a factor that we have to shut the school down.
So it sounds like that's a different metric, though, than the way we're reporting it here on a state level. This is really a function of DHHS capacity, the way we're looking at it here.
So I kind of think about it.
I think that makes sense.
From the school, from the school setting, you know, all of the data is based on science, but when you're running a school system, the science may not align with the practice. So contact tracing is one of those, and staffing is another one. So, you know, is there a magic number to staffing? I would have said yes, except David and Misty have proved me wrong, because they figured out how to, you know, make it happen in extreme situations. But the reason that I got to the place where I was, where I felt like we had to go remote, was the community transmission in the district had gone to a place where our nurses were overwhelmed, and our staffing was diminished. Maybe think about that, just before Christmas, Misty had 13 staff out.
Right.
And that's a small school.
Yeah.
And somehow, she managed to keep it together. I think that the, I would say, the generosity of the board in terms of allowing us to bring in parents as we change models will help. It won't cure, but it'll help us when we're ready to open. So that, you know, going back to UC's presentation earlier, what she was talking about is the date for the middle school, a hard date? No. I mean, what I said to a parent today who called me was, "If it was today, I wouldn't be opening the middle school, because these factors are too high for us to bring in hundreds of kids." And then, that gets compounded when we talk about the high school. So the greater number of kids we have in the school, and I think Catherine alluded to this, our capacity to stay on top of contact tracing and staffing becomes, could become so overwhelming that we have to turn off the spigot, just because it's beyond our capacity to deal with it.
Megan?
Sorry, um, thank you. I also just want to say on behalf of the students, thank you to all of the nursing staff, because they really do do a wonderful job, even without the pandemic. They are a wonderful resource to have in all of the schools. I just had a question related to the contract tracing. An important part of that is being able to get tested. And so, I just am wondering about when we are contact tracing and asking students to quarantine, and the methods at which they're getting tested, and whether or not they have the resources to get tested? Because I understand that's independent from the school's resources.
Yeah, so I'll take, I'll take a chance at it, and a nurse can jump up. So when a nurse reaches out based on contact tracing and recommends testing, now- now remember, they don't have to do testing. So there's kind of two pieces that we have families and students who will do testing and then we have some that choose quarantine. If they choose quarantine, we automatically need to keep that program closed because we don't know the outcome of that, of that potential COVID situation. In terms of testing, so the nurses all work with families to recommend particular places for testing. There is a seat, uh, there's a sheet published by the DHHS that recommends particular locations to go to. There are three different tests you can get in New Hampshire, depending on whether you have symptoms or not, whether you've been exposed or not, or if you're asymptomatic, also determines what test you're given by the provider that's giving the test. So we can't count always on, you know, for example, if you, if you have a positive case in your household and you go in and get a rapid test within two days, we really kind of can't accept that because you haven't had enough time to be exposed to the virus to potentially then contract COVID-19. So the nurses do a really good job with, working with families and students to say, okay, you've been exposed, try and wait until this point to get your testing. You can still call places and try and schedule it, but you want to wait until at least this timeframe. So those are some of the things that, that they have to go through. Do you want to, anything else? Anything else with that, do you think, that I didn't cover?
Well, the only question I have is if you could scroll up because that metric, I have one from December 21st and I'd love to see the bottom page of the January 4th, just to see what those other metrics are saying. That'd be awesome.
This was, this was shared with me by Megan just after I submitted the materials to the board for your, the backup. So this was the one that, that she created for this week.
Right, which is fine. I just want, I was curious what we're up to because I heard a different, when I heard Dr. Chan speak at the governor's news conference yesterday, the percent, I was very surprised because the percent, the positivity rate that he gave was much lower and I was like, oh. I just didn't seem to jive with these numbers, so I was just curious.
I wonder if it was a statewide number, because this is based on a county number.
Right, but there is a state number there too. So it's just interesting. I don't know, maybe I just missed it.
They also segment it by test type and the, the time window that they're looking back. So if you look, even if you look at the state report, they, they report two different numbers each day by, by PCR and antigen testing.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, they report the different test results.
That could have been it too. Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
UNH comes back in February. They were excellent in the fall. How should we be thinking about, you know, the UNH-reported data and how it, how to weigh it against the other transmission data and other data?
Yeah, so, I mean, Todd can jump in with this a little bit because he was talking with UNH a little bit about this early on. But they, some of their data, of course, is falling in with our Durham data and then our county data. And then UNH has a dashboard as well. So we actually were monitoring their dashboard pretty frequently. And we actually, as soon as the students left, we saw that quick drop in Durham. But guess what? It went right back up. So there was a, it looked like there was a little bit of relief from the students, but then you could clearly see in the Durham community, there was transmission within the Durham community. So we are monitoring that dashboard as well.
I was so glad to hear Dr. Morris really talking about the self-responsibility from families. And I wonder if we might work with UNH to have a, you know, a marketing campaign that students' behavior affects the little ones too. Student, university behavior affects whether our K-12 students can go to school.
Yeah, I think that the university, I, I've been very impressed with the president's messages out to the student body when they started going. In the first month, I think everybody was behaving. And then by the beginning of October, they started doing typical college kids things. And he put out a video to the entire student population, which I thought was wonderfully done and just said, hey, if you want this university open, you've got to behave. You can't be doing things like this. So I think that he's done a really good job of, of messaging that.
I'm curious what definition we're using for close contacts when we're applying requests to quarantine? Because if we're following six feet spacing, you would never meet the definition that the state is using.
Yeah, it's a super good point. We'll talk about how we're identifying those close contacts. Yeah.
So per the state of New Hampshire, which is what we are following, a close contact is anybody who has been, you know, within six feet for longer than 10 minutes. So there are variables to that. There are certain scenarios and programs that we have to break a six-foot barrier in the health office. I think it would be kind of bizarre to treat people from six feet away. Just throwing that out there. But, you know, younger age groups, it can be challenging. So there are variables, even though we have a template of what is a close contact. It is subject to change with case by case.
And I would say, Michael, that we do, this is one of the places where the nurses and administration work very closely together because, you know, in a special ed setting is an example. It's generally in a smaller classroom. The first question the nurses ask the special educator is, was, was six feet honored and did everybody have their masks on? And so that's like the first question out of their mouths regardless. You know, when we talk about the PEP program, you know, all the little people have done a marvelous job with masks, they really have. But they're still little people and the six-foot thing, you know, there's, there's no magic barrier from me touching Al right now. And there certainly isn't when you're three and four years old. And so, you know, that, that adds to the dynamic. The nurses are very thorough in asking the criteria and then that tells them the next step. And when it gets into that gray area, they're in contact with one of the three of us immediately saying, okay, this is the scenario. And then the three of us start kibitzing over, you know, what's the next step? And then we get back to the nurse. So it's a, it's a dynamic conversation almost on every, every issue. It's very rare throughout the fall that something is fallen, fallen into a very black and white, easy breezy answer almost always. It's been, okay, what happened here? Who was there? What were they doing? And the nurses and administration are kind of walking their way through it. It's a very customized and time-intensive process.
And I would add that we have been extremely careful with looking at that primary contact piece. So sometimes it may not be a student to student, but there may be a staff member or two who have had to violate that six-foot rule for one reason or another, but then they're also doing that within a classroom. So they inherently, you know, become a contact that, depending on the timeframe, has been in other, in contact with other students or staff. So I do applaud our efforts because I do think this is why we stayed open as long as we did. We did take additional precautions at times to make sure that we, you know, really identified which students, which student siblings, et cetera. And we didn't have a lot of stops and starts. And we didn't have any stops and starts. We, we had programs for short term that needed to be closed, like preschool and things like that. But we were able to really keep classrooms running for the most part, except for a few, a few places where we just didn't feel comfortable keeping it open given a positive case or the likelihood of a positive case.
In terms of the definition of close contact, how it impacts contact tracing, hypothetically, if we were to move to a model, well, let me just back up real quick. One of the things I found really helpful in the presentation we had at the last meeting was when the epidemiologist told us, she basically said half-days are better than full-days because you don't need to remove your mask to eat. So hypothetically, if we were to adopt something of a greater period of time than a half-day where it necessitated, you know, some protocol where masks were removed, what impact would that have on the definition of close contact and therefore contact tracing?
It becomes more of a problem. Obviously, if you're unmasked and you're sharing a space for eating, even if you are six feet apart, there's been transmission, obviously, seen in public spaces for eating. It does make it more of a, it shuts down. So if we have to put kids in spaces where they're going to have to eat, even if they're six feet apart or more, we likely will have to close those students down more frequently. I know Jay and the staff have been working on how do they look at eating? And they're coming up with some pretty creative ideas to, again, make sure they keep kids on team, keep kids with their cohorts, so we're not mixing cohorts in order to really minimize an impact on cross-cohort contamination.
I had two questions. The second is whether any of these rows we can affect. So by bringing in extra contact tracing resources or partnering with testing resources. But the one that I think requires more conversation is how we act on the columns. So right now, there's a column for full remote. There's a column for what we would say are targeted learners or our hybrid. Right now, those are combined. And on the far side, there's what I shorthanded as less than six feet. So, you know, more than the, than the, we currently think we have capacity for. But really, we have a number of stages in, in our decision-making. So currently, we are full remote. At some point, the elementary schools and the targeted learners will go back. At some point, we will say that the middle school model can change. And at some point, this is not sequential, we will say that the high school model, hybrid, high school hybrid model can come into effect. And so these, I think, I'm hoping we can discuss if this is something we're sharing with the community, really what the columns are or where the elementary school and targeted piece is as distinct from when we choose to reopen the middle school and high school. I think they're probably, like, my gut is that the elementary targeted is maybe in the low side of the high critical, higher critical that we would reopen and that the middle school and high school might be more in the middle of the medium. But I'm curious what, you know, what you've thought in terms of using the columns to make decisions for these various groups.
Million-dollar question.
Yeah. I guess I keep going back to Megan's comment, you're choosing from two bad options. You know, clearly, there, there is a point in all of these where you, you need to make a distinction, like the middle of the middle column, yeah, I think is kind of where you're at, is where, when are we in the, the low half of the continuum? And when are we in the high half? And when can we get more kids in and when, you know? We did have a conversation around the notion of, should we look at this by building versus as a whole district? And I think there is some room for that. One of the things, I guess, you know, kind of going back to Tom's question about is there an absolute point where any one of these, you say, okay, we're, we're absolutely unable to be in person? It is going to be a relative judgment. But I would say the more criterion we have at the high end, the less likely it is that we're going to be able to overlook something and say, okay. So for example, if we said the transmission rate is in the middle category, but everything else is in the high category, then that's going to influence our judgment that way. So we didn't get into dividing, like saying, what are the percentile factors for like when we would make those determinations? To some extent, I think we have to start using it and having the conversations. What I would hope would be the process would be we would use this, governance could kind of look at it against our whole system and have conversations as a team in terms of what we thought was manageable, given the information. And then we recommend that to you. And hopefully, we're not having whole-board conversations all the time about why are you here versus here? We're, we're coming to you with a recommendation based on our best judgment. Because it, it, we probably could. We could probably work with Megan to kind of subdivide some of these categories and figure out where that point might be. But again, it's still going to come down to some level of a value judgment we're going to have to make about what's our risk tolerance and where do we want to be?
Well, I was trying to, actually, that's what I tried to address earlier when I was asking my question is like, so in other words, the term hybrid is vague. So what you really want is what is, I can't even remember what model we did for the middle school. Was it like Model 2 or whatever the heck it was?
Hybrid.
Hybrid. So, so clearly define which model falls. So if, if I'm looking at the high school and Suzanne presents her model, me as a high school parent, I can look at that and say, okay, I know, like if we're in this first column, that we're remote. But if we're in column two, somewhere within there, and there will be a judgment call, that I can begin to process, oh yeah, that would be the, whatever, the 50% model would be. And then the low risk may be something down the future of a fuller thing. So I think clearly defining what you mean by hybrid is important.
Anything that's not totally remote and anything that's not totally in is hybrid.
So we need to change the word on one of those points.
Okay. I mean, I'm just saying like that, defining that is important.
I think that'd be good.
And so just to finish that, I don't, I wouldn't want somebody to see this and say, well, our elementary school is in our, so why can't our middle school be in? So this, sort of this, this big, medium category. I think, you know, maybe while we are going to look to staff and administration to make the, the recommendation at any given point, I wonder if it would be appropriate tonight to have a motion or a policy or something where we are acknowledging that the elementary and targeted learners are sort of a different beast, will probably return to that, even though some of the, you know, more of the criteria are, the indicators are in the high category. Right? And that a general philosophy of medium trending downward indicators for the opening of the middle school or high school.
So, and I, kind of to your points, UC, I, I think the contact tracing really does speak to the difference between elementary and targeted, where it's much easier to do that contact tracing if you're talking about an elementary school classroom. You know, you've got, yeah, I mean, I understand you do have specials and what have you as far as faculty. But compared to the middle and the high school, so I definitely do see a difference in terms of what you're saying, UC. As far as, you know, if contact tracing is in the high category, you know, perhaps that means, you know, we can't go for middle and high school, but we can perhaps consider going for elementary school because we do have that ability to contact trace for that age group. So just to kind of, to your point of, I do see value in having perhaps different criteria for elementary versus middle and high.
And it comes down to sort of the groups. So what you're really identifying there Denise and UC is sort of your groups of students and what do they look like and where do those groups move? So we know that high school groups do not move like elementary, you know, groups. And with the middle school, they keep the groups together and the intention is staff members, you know, shift. So again, groups are staying together. You just can't accomplish that in the same way in a high school setting. So it's, it's not just the ability to contact trace, it's the how are we contacting trace within a group?
Right.
And what's our ability to do that? I think the other important thing is, is in here is, you know, we did hear from Megan that younger students are not impacted as much for COVID. However, the staff are not young, younger students. And they are bringing it home to families. And, and this is why we see, you know, transmission and increase in rates. So I just want us to also remember that just because our youngest population isn't getting as sick, they are having an impact because we are publicly gathering. It does impact our overall healthcare system. So I think that's just another thing to keep in mind is, as we look at staffing, it impacts staffing and those other categories in a different way. Maybe not contact tracing, but in terms of staffing.
Okay. I just have a question about our decision. You know, are we, I mean, are we going to like approve the plan that's presented? Are we going to kind of create these other questions that UC is talking about? Where we kind of like have certain criteria for different schools, which becomes, becomes, it gets really complicated, I would think.
I would recommend that we don't go down that path because I think that gets even more confusing. You know, when we had the presentation, you know, this, we were looking at it from the point of Stratford County. And then we looked at it from the point in the presentation from Dover. And in this, in this presentation, it's looking at it from Durham, Lee, Madbury, Barrington and Dover. And the elementary schools, you know, if we looked at Lee and Madbury, separate from Stratford County, the instances right today are incredibly low. Now, they did spike before Christmas, but they're back down again. But we have to remember that one-third of both of those schools are kids coming from Durham. So it's not like Lee and Madbury live in a, in their own little bubble. What I'm hoping the board will do is adopt this metric and let administration apply it week by week. And of course, we'll keep you all posted. I don't think it's possible to get down to a place where if we do this factor, then Lee is in and, and Madbury's out. I think we need to use it, apply it and make our best judgments. I had a phone call this week from a parent who was angry. And the parent was telling me how inconsistent I have been in terms of the decisions I've been making. And I said, yep, you're right. I didn't argue. The decisions have been inconsistent. Well, why are they inconsistent? Because if we were going to be consistent, we would have been 100% remote from day one and never brought a child in. The minute I chose to have K through The minute I chose to have K through four in, or the minute I chose to have the special education students in from the beginning of the school year, that's inconsistent with this data. So, you know, the, the issue is, and it goes back to what I was saying to Michael, there's a judgment that needs to be placed as we make these decisions. And those judgments are based on our capacity to handle what's going on. And we've been, right up until Christmas, able to keep the element. So we have a history with the elementaries that we've been pretty successful in. And we have a history with our special education students that we've been pretty successful in. Not that we didn't have to shut down a class here or, or send a program home. But it goes back to what Denise was observing. So, you know, we apply science against the reality of running a school. And I know that both David and Misty are anxious to bring their, their little people in. But we also have to make sure that the grownups are safe. And we did a pretty good job of that in the fall with our K through four. I have no reason to believe that we won't be doing a pretty good job of that in the winter and spring. And if for some reason it falls apart like it did just before Christmas, then we make the decision to go remote. So, I don't think you create different categories. I think you apply the same categories, but you apply them to the age group you're dealing with. And then, going back to Michael's observation, it also applies to the numbers of students who are in a building. So Suzanne's dynamic, not just programmatically, is dry, is enormously different than what Misty and David are facing. And so, you've got to, I mean, in my mind, if you adopt this, we apply it and we keep you guys posted as to the decisions we're making. That's how I would do it.
So, so I guess, I guess in terms of decision, you know, are, are we ready to, are people, how comfortable do people feel voting on this? Or do we need to have, because I think we need, we have another big presentation tonight. We'd have to post, put this off, I would think, if we're going to have Suzanne's presentation on the high school. So I guess, how do people feel about, you know, approving this as is?
Well, I think we have to approve, if, right now, we've said we're bringing elementary back next week, correct? I mean, that's, that-
I'm going to ask for one more week, so we have the 14 days from January 1st.
So, so you are asking?
I am, I was going to wait until this was done and then-
Okay. Because my point being is that if, and that makes, may make a difference, but if, you know, we were, had a plan that we were bringing the kids in that soon, we almost have to make a decision to, to do something, but-
Brian?
I guess it really depends how we're going to follow this. I've gone, getting different kind of ideas from, from all of you. But if, if we have to wait until, say, we're in high critical now, we have to wait until everything hits medium before we can move to that next level? Or is it, I mean, because I just feel we're going to pigeonhole ourselves into, into, you know?
Yeah, so each week, Megan has agreed to do this calculation for us specifically. And then, we'll apply this against our circumstances locally. So, you know, it's very possible that we could be in high, but still bring in our targeted learners and, and our elementary, because we feel like it's a different environment than high for a high school or a middle school, where you're going to bring in hundreds upon hundreds of kids.
What, though, if you're going down the list, and every other one goes between medium and high, which, which one are you in?
Well, I'd go tell you, the driving ones for me will be the practicality of, of running a school system. That's kind of what Michael and I were talking about. If I can't run the school system, then obviously, we're in high. You know, I can't open a school because a community transmission rate, you know, reached the level it did before, from Thanksgiving to Christmas, then really, this chart at that point is, is meaningless to me because our community transmission is, is off, off the rails. So, you know, I, it's, it's not like the MOA where you're locked into a particular process. This is, as Todd has alluded to, a, a, a process for me making decisions based on my best judgment, based on what this data is telling us, and applying it against the reality of, of running a school.
And if I could also just, just quickly add to, remember, we did highlight six that we think are the highest priorities. So if you look here, what's on the screen, transmission rate, testing availability, percent of tests that are positive, time to test, contact tracing, and staffing capacity would be the things that would be our highest priority, because they seem to be most directly correlated to our ability to run the school. So that's where we would put the, most of our energy. The other categories are important and valid data, but we did say that those six would be the ones we would spend our, most of our time.
So if those six look good, and the other ones may not look as good, that's, that's a positive thing? Or is that, does that hold you back?
Well, I guess it's, the question is, how bad do the others look? And I'll give you an example. In the, in the, in the Fosters the other day, the superintendent of Dover was talking about re-entry planning for their school. And he was talking about the, the cases per hundred, 100,000. And then, obviously, below 25 cases per 100,000 was where they wanted to be. Well, right now, Dover is 1,099 per 100,000. So it's, it's like light years above where they want to be. So it's hard to imagine with something that significant, that it would be, by itself, it's a pretty significant factor. So, generally speaking, what you said, Brian, I, yes, I think if, if we saw that the six factors that are most important to us were in that medium to lower-risk category, I think we would be inclined to recommend as aggressive an in-person model as we felt comfortable with. That being said, we don't want to leave out the fact that these other things are pretty significant, too.
Yeah.
As I understand it, the metrics are just guidelines, not so much as rules as to how we will be bringing students back in. And I think looking at these, I mean, this is what has, administration has been using when they're looking at what students are bringing in. The reason for putting it down like this is more, I think, a transparency thing-
Yeah, you nailed it. You're nailing it, yeah.
The public can understand what administration is doing. But by outlining these metrics, we're not saying, oh, it has to be, I think, this exact or this exact, or like, these rules, or it has to apply to the building in a specific way. It's more like, I guess, a blanket you throw onto the building and see which parts fit and which parts don't. And then, this is the, what the public can refer to, to better understand. And so, like, when Dr. Moore says, oh, we're bringing students back even though we're in the high critical risk because of contract tracings at this percent, and they can refer to this chart and understand, oh, well, that puts it in a different category, therefore, it makes it safer. So I think that this is just meant to be pretty, not unspecific, but not like, the most detailed, so that just, we're all on the same footing as a community.
It provides the context for the conversation.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I mean, again, thinking about where we're going, we're about to, you know, as we approve all these plans, and we begin to try to ramp up over the next three or four weeks, we're try, and again, the only reason I said define what hybrid is, if you're a parent and you're busy, you don't know what the heck that means. It's just like, what does that mean to me in the second semester? So if it's whatever model it is, this provides you the, the context of conversation of the next three weeks, where parents can, can begin to say, okay, this is where we're going, this is why we're going here, and this is how it will be impacted. And so, I think that's what this is. And so, your weekly message that you're putting out allows you to define, okay, we looked at this, and this is why we're doing what we're doing. And so, I think that's enough, because you'll do the explanation of why you did it based upon this criteria. So, so I like this. This is really good. And I think it adds, it takes away, I mean, you're never going to take the uncertainty of, of COVID away, but it allows parents to understand why you're doing what you're doing. And, and if they can see trend lines, what, where are we moving to? So, I'm perfectly fine with this. And I, I mean, it'd be really awesome if next Monday, we test out, put this up, and try it out. And, and again, I mean, we can think of categories and do all the stuff, but let's just, I, I think we've done enough to start to, to work with.
Would you be willing to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion that we approve the Oyster River School Board District Assessment COVID Metrics.
When would be appropriate to suggest amendments?
We'd get a second.
We have to have a second. I'll second.
Second?
That's the answer.
Yeah, so I'll second.
Moved by, I'll second by Denise. So I, it's been so long since we had an amendment. So, do you make the amendment now, and we vote on the amendment, then we vote on the, okay? Go ahead.
I, just as a, to start, I think it's a, it's a fabulous tool, and that as part of this, we need the so what, or the sort of how it will be used. So I would want the implications to be on this page. So the, the idea of the full remote or the hybrid, targeted slash hybrid and fully in person, like, ideally, this document will be not able to be taken out of context because we're so very clear about what it means.
What does it mean to me?
Right. Something like, these metrics will serve as a guide to administration recommendation to reopen school buildings and programs, something like that. And then, I still think we have a risk of someone saying, why is the elementary school open but the middle school not? And so, something like, in higher-risk circumstances, existing programs will be more likely to be continued than new programs started. That's really unwieldy, but you know, just, again, giving us cover, giving, giving, explaining the rationale for the fact that we'll likely go back with our existing programs before we open new buildings. And then, the final thing would be to define contact tracing. It just, it's a little, someone seeing this for the first time, not, not define it, but to say that it is our own capacity for contact tracing, and that maybe even though we're going to use the state metrics because we can't quite follow our own, just being clear what, what that means for us.
So, would adding into the contact tracing box an additional statement? Because I think that the contact tracing capacity of DHHS is a valuable piece of information, but add something about local contact tracing ability, so that each one, it's identified that we're also looking at our local ability to do it.
I could imagine, you know, it being the highest priority external metrics, the, you know, the, the four or the five that are, that you've raised. Those are first. Maybe also, the hospital capacity is down there, but it's not in bold. And then, at the bottom, the internal factors of staffing capacity, and, you know, a note that it's contact tracing also.
So that's an awful lot. I mean, can you go?
I, I got it.
Can I, can I simplify the second one?
Yes.
Just a friendly suggestion. Rather than putting, like, the rationale in this, the matrix, how about if the rationale is placed in the weekly thing that goes out to the parent? Really? Because when they put that up on the dashboard, you could explain, they'll explain that, like, okay, the middle school opened up, and this is why. And the high school opened up, and this is why. It's like, rather than having it in a static document in your weekly thing, you're updating it, and Jim is easily able to put the rationale for why we're doing what we're doing. It accomplishes the same thing, it's just more fluid, I think.
I guess it's, if, I think it's important that we commit to that. We've had some, that if we are approving something, it should include the framing of it, because that is important to how it's used.
I thought all of those were good suggestions.
I mean, I'm fine either way.
Do you think that's workable?
Oh, yeah. I thought that they're all good. They help. I, I agree with that. I don't think it should be embedded in the metrics, but I think it can be attached as a, as the rationale, and then-
Up here or down here?
Yeah. I wouldn't even put it on here, because it'll just mess it up. I'll just attach something to it.
Okay. So ready to vote on, could you just read, read that again?
I felt like the second one was a little long. I don't know if we could shorten it up a little bit. It just sounded confusing.
I can do it. I mean, I think this is pretty straightforward. I didn't, I understood everything. So it would be like, these metrics will serve as a guide to administration. That was one. Distilling programs will be given preference over starting new programs. That's two. And that we would define what contract may, me, contract tracing means from a local perspective. That's three.
That's fine.
And writing the implications for the categories on the document. So, full remote, targeted slash hybrid, and full in person.
Yeah, okay. So, we vote on the amendment, then we vote on the motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So all in favor of-
Is there a second? I'll second the amendment.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, moved by Uzi, seconded by Dan. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, all those opposed, one opposed. So the amendment passes. Now, can we vote on the motion as amended? Right?
So, I'm going to vote against the motion, because I don't think we should be tying this to any specific model. The way we're, the way we're talking about using it, I, I'm not, and the reason I voted against the amendment is because I don't think we should be tying any of these columns to any specific model unless we actually mean that. And I don't think we do in a, in a rigid way. So, I, I'm, I'm going to vote against it.
Okay.
Can I just address that, Michael? Because I, I want to make sure I'm understanding, because your challenge makes me want to ask clarifying question. What I, what I, I thought what Uzi was saying is that we would put in, in this high, medium, and low, not the specific models of the middle school, high school, and elementary, but the idea that the highest risk would be remote, the medium risk would be some form of hybrid, because we have three different hybrids going on, and that the lowest risk would be all in, assuming that, you know, we can meet the MOA criteria, of course. Is that, is that, am I reading?
I understand that that's the intent of how to use it, but we also, there's no formula. I, I think that's going to create additional churn, because there's no objective way to, as we were saying earlier, of saying how many in, in the critical column versus how many in the medium column mean it's okay to do hybrid or to expand a program. I think what I'm hearing is we want this to be input that gives us information, but that we apply with flexibility.
Right.
And I think by putting language about a specific model on there, we're, we're giving the impression that we're not, we don't have that. I, I actually think that, that the language is internally contradictory, that we're saying, yes, it's, it's flexible, but then we're applying these specific terms to specific columns.
Is there a way of making sure that it's guidance? Or, the thing is, if we don't put the implication on this document, that we need a separate translation document that, or, you know, a communication that says, we, you know, you and Al were so articulate about this at our last meeting, we don't want parents to have to fill out a survey without, you know, to commit their kids without knowing the indicators that we will use. And so, if the targeted slash hybrid category is not written here on medium, then it has to be in a different communication, saying, you know, we will open the middle school if this separate chart says, is in the medium category.
I guess my point is, it's still subjective.
Of course.
Yeah.
And by, by putting those labels on it, we give the impression that it is objective, when really, it's not.
So, Michael, that's kind of why I wanted to use the website, not the criteria, because the website gives you the flexibility to translate the criteria into what you're doing.
Yeah.
It doesn't tie it to anything. So I was like, so if I put, if, you know, on Monday, I'm a parent, and I pull up there, and I say, okay, we're under medium, what, what does that mean to me? And it's like, so within that weekly element, that gives Jim the flexibility to explain how he's applying the matrix to each model. So, it, it'll say like, hey, you're, you're an elementary kid, this is what this means to you. You're a middle school parent, this is what this means to you. I think it's a much more effect, it gives you much more flexibility to explain how you're applying the matrix to your specific situation. So, I, the only thing I wanted to clarify, for me, in terms of what they were, is apparently, what does the hybrid mean to me? But I think like the flex, I think it, it's much better to use, keep this as a separate thing, and then use the website as a mechanism to explain how you're using the criteria.
Well, we've already-
Yeah, I know. I just wanted, I just wanted to know where Michael was coming from. I'm sorry for delaying.
I, I still think that it could be read as a subjective document. So, are we ready to vote on the motion as amended? Okay, are we ready? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, all those opposed, one opposed. Okay. It's approved as amended by six to one vote.
But that still doesn't stop Jim from doing all the stuff that he does.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I was just wanting, wanted to get inside Michael's head to figure out what he was-
Okay. Okay.
So I just wanted, one more thing just before we close and move on. I just, again, wanted to thank you all for inviting the nursing department here tonight.
Yeah.
It was, I mean, this group here is exceptional. I feel amazingly blessed every day to work with them. They are experts. They come with amazing school nursing experience and clinical experience, and they have been extraordinary. They are a team that, it's not, it's unmatched. Find me a better team, I'll pay you 20 bucks, but you won't find it. They, you know, call parents, they work weekends and evenings, they are really all in it, because they really do want your students in school. They want our students in school. So they work very hard to minimize time down for staff and students. So, so thank you for having them here. So, so thank you for having them here. The other nursing staff member you didn't get to meet is Michael Hope. He's, he's there tonight. He is at our middle school and Kim Langlois is not here tonight, but she is our LPN at the high school. So I just also wanted to recognize them as part of our team.
Let's have a standing applause for the nurses.
Thank you.
And if there's anything you need, especially around contact tracing resources or ideas for being able to access quicker testing, please let us know.
I'm going to call a five-minute break now. It's 8:50. So we'll call a five-minute break and then we'll start in with the high school.
The sort of assurance that you were talking about last, about before they commit their students.
It's not there. It's still subjective.
Right? But it's a, it's a, it's narrow.
The way you do that is by saying, we're going to, we've assessed the data and we think it's, we're time, it's time to go.
Which we can do at the high school, but we can't do at the middle school because we need to reassign the teams now.
But what's wrong with reassigning teams? Like you said, prospectively. They can, they can work with their new teams remotely just as well as they can work with their new teams.
Well, that's. I thought the ship had sailed for.
It's going to shoot out, first of all.
Reassigning the sections.
It really is. There's no defense. I'm paying no cost. The story about how this gets applied is too nuanced to put labels on the columns.
Yeah, I just wondered.
That's what it comes down to.
How you would, how you.
It's a, it's a, it's a story. Oh, well, unless we're going to establish actual objective criteria, which we're not going to do. I think we really should be saying go, no go before we ask for.
So he was the number one.
Before a decision.
Yeah. He's 230. And if we don't. Yeah, 230. I think that shit might fail.
Then I think you'll get more people that say they are going to stay remote than would otherwise.
And he had to sit in any accident because of the uncertainty. So it's like, he's, he's a big. I guess I feel like there's, if this is roughly, in principle, given that there's subjectivity and flexibility, but this is roughly what we would do. Or before we would go, you know, it's not, we're not going to wait until it gets to the justice, you know, we're not going to, and we can agree to disagree, but that's the.
It's too subjective. It's too subjective. You're going to, is somebody going to say that, you know, contact tracing is more important and somebody else is going to say that testing availability is more important and it's just, it's too, it's too squishy.
A board member or a family?
Board member, Jim, between Jim and me, between, between a parent who's looking at this at home and, yeah.
But it's saying we're not going to wait until it goes to, you know, zero risk and it's saying we're not going to go to. No, I wanted to hear it too.
No, that's fine. If we, I guess if we're going to, I would love to establish objective criteria. But we're not going, just from the dynamic, that's not going to happen. So I would prefer not to give the suggestion that these are objective criteria.
I thought you both knew about. No, Monday. They start Monday. Yeah, you know, we didn't get, I didn't get my newsletter there. You know how they usually have that newsletter that says like what their recycling schedule is and all that? So I had, I had asked them, I would actually, during the vacation, on my vacation, we're getting it between just this year. And they said we were supposed to go out this week, so I'm like, okay, we should be getting it any day, but I did ask and it doesn't start till next Monday.
I have a tradition, my driver, I give them screen stories.
Well, you can have ours.
It's the way, it's the way we search like.
Yeah, I mean, you can absolutely come by my house. I'll tell you when we, we'll put it out first thing Monday morning. Actually, we'll probably put it out Sunday night, but. Yeah, it's awesome. Yeah, it's a pretty big.
Do you want to vote on that or just want to?
You got a really nice one. We'll get out. Yep.
Okay.
So I would like to extend the total remote by one week largely because of the current data we're in. In using this criteria, our percentages is over 400, I think, per 100,000. But also because if we look at the month of January and again, going back to the whole issue around travel, Christmas and then New Year's, if people got together, if we had the extra week, we'd have the full 14 days that the nurses referred to in their slide. And instead of opening on the 11th, open the elementary on the 18th. That gives us just a little bit more of a safety window in terms of that 14-day window that the nurses had talked about.
When, excuse me, when's Martin Luther King Day, though?
Oh, yeah.
Eighteenth.
So it would be the 19th.
Nineteenth. Yeah, thank you, Denise. I don't have the holiday rec on my calendar.
So you don't need, you don't need to vote on that, no?
I don't, but I know that Michael historically doesn't mind confirming my recommendations. So if he wants to do that, that's comfortable. I'm comfortable either way. And I'll inform the parents tomorrow.
Okay. I think we can just go with that.
Yeah. And then because of that recommendation, Doris wants me just to say to our parents out there that they should anticipate an email from food service to make sure that their child can get meals during that week.
Suzanne.
Good evening. So this evening, I'm going to talk a little, I'm going to talk about a AMPM hybrid model. It is something that we have, you haven't seen before. This model that was created worked off of criteria that we discussed at the last board meeting and also criteria that we've discussed in the past. The new criteria really focuses on giving remote students, students that are working remotely and students that are in-person instructional options from, directly from their teacher. So that was one of the things that we had talked about last time. So that's one of the things that I worked on. So this model ensures that all students have instruction with, with the teacher record. It ensures that all students are accounted for every single day. So every student will connect with the teacher at some point during the day. It ensures that faculty, well, we will need to ensure that faculty and staff that need coverage, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about that. That's part of the presentation. It adheres to the COVID guidelines that have been set forth. It adheres to the contract and the MOA and it offers both, it offers equity for both remote, students that are working remotely and students that are in-person. We will continue, I don't talk about it throughout the presentation, but please know that targeted learners will be invited into the building during remote times also. So that piece that we're already utilizing, this element of targeted learning, those learners will already, they'll still come into the building every single day. So, so when you see the in-person time, know that the targeted learners are, that's extended. And then this model hopefully offers more support to the CTE students and the UNHCATs students, so students that are taking classes outside of our building. As we know, schools have been shifting so their own schedules and their own models. And so students that are traveling between schools have had to manage the shifting schedules of the school that they're attending as well as the school that they're going to for their programming. So it's been a big challenge this year for all CTE students that are traveling between schools. So we want to, we've tried really hard to see if there's a way that we can help with that. And then also we take in consideration issues of transportation and all the spacing needs and everything. So this is what the, the model is, a 50% model, AMPM model. So it's broken, the day is broken in half. So in the morning, you have the remote classes occurring. Those are 45-minute classes and it's all of the classes that would meet that day. So on a blue day, it's A, C, F and E. And on a white day, it's B, D, G, and then the advisory or right now it's FLACs, which is considered office hours. So then in the afternoon would be the in-person time and there's time in the middle there for travel. So I'm going to go through a little bit more and describe a little more about what this looks like for kids and what it looks like for teachers. And then if you have questions at the end, I'm happy to answer them. So we do lose office hours on white day for remote students. So Wednesdays are going to be really important because Wednesdays are going to be the day that our remote students are going to be able to access teachers for office hours. So we are not impacting, Wednesday will shift a little bit, but not dramatically because we need our remote students to be able to access their teachers for office hours. Those have been so important this year for students and we don't want to lose that. So the weekly rotation by alphabet. So if I am a student and I'm an in-person student, I'm, I'm someone who my parents and I have decided that I'm going to be in the building. If my last name, and again, we're hoping that this will work out perfectly. There may be some kids that are a little, that may have to, we'll have to shuffle them around. But if my last name is A through KI, then I would be in-person on Mondays and Tuesdays and then Wednesdays would be a different schedule. And then Thursdays and Fridays, I would be working remotely. And then the kids, it would flip for the other half of the alphabet. So they would work remotely on Mondays and Tuesdays and then they would be in-person on Thursdays and Fridays. And then remote kids would always be remote in the morning. So their classes would always be in the AM, which means that they would be working asynchronously in the afternoon. So weekly schedule would look, again, Mondays and Tuesdays, if I'm at the end of the alphabet, I am going to be a remote student that day. So I'm going to go to my blue, my blue day classes from home and I'm going to be joined with the kids that are fully remote in those classes. So let's say Megan is a fully remote student and I'm, I'm an in-person student. Well, my last name is, ends at the end of the alphabet, so Megan and I are going to be in class together on Monday, but when I come to school, if I'm the in-person student and let's say Megan's the remote student, when I go to school the following, when I go for in-person, Megan's going to still be remote, but she's going to be with that other group of kids. She's not going to be with me because I'm going to be in-person that day. And I'm going to, I'll repeat that again to, it's a lot to take in. So again, targeted learners are going to be coming in every day. We, we want to keep the remote office hours on Wednesday mornings. Again, those are really important and the faculty really values that, that time with the remote students. We want to keep the opportunity for faculty to meet and to have some professional development, department meetings, curriculum work. They really need that time to do that in the middle of the day. And then in the afternoon, we want the opportunity to be able to bring groups of kids in in different ways. So we're going to need to bring in, this model works because it's alphabetical. However, there are times when we need to bring the whole freshman class in or all of the seniors or juniors or an entire class needs to be together for a variety of different reasons. And so this would allow us to do that on Wednesday. Or we may decide it's, you know, the week before exams and we really want to have in-person office hours, so let's institute in-person office hours in the afternoon on Wednesday. So Wednesday would give us a little flexibility depending on the needs of the school and the needs of the students at that time. So I'm going to go through a couple of schedules and then I'll, then I'll pause to see if anyone has any questions. So faculty schedule, so if I, this is a faculty schedule and this is what a Monday and a Thursday would look like for this, for this particular teacher. So they have an A period prep, so they would have prep and then they would go into remote classes on Mondays and Thursdays. So the morning would be remote earth systems, remote advisory where all kids are checking in. So every single day that there's an advisory, those advisories are in the morning and they're all remote so that all kids can meet. Because one of the things we heard from teachers was that they did not want to have an advisory with in-person kids and advisory with remote kids separately. That advisory community is really important to be together. So we want to do that in a remote setting and it also allows us to take attendance and to get those remote, to get kids that are coming in person in the afternoon up. Like, it's time to get up and I'll, and I'll explain that in a little bit in one of the next slides. So then they would go to remote earth systems, remote astronomy. Then there's a lunch break and then they would do, they would have the same thing in the afternoon, however, that would be in-person with a different group of kids. So now this is an example, a schedule example for a student who is completely remote. So they would have all their classes in the morning. On Wednesday, they would have their advisory check-in and they would have remote office hours. And then in the afternoon, from 12 o'clock to 3:05, they would be asynchronous. We really need to start working on getting cameras on and so this is going to be a priority moving forward. I know the student senate has been working on it and I, and Megan, I believe, is going to be discussing that a little bit. But this is something that we really need to, to get going for kids is to really, because it's going to be imperative for students that are working remotely with shortened classes for teachers to be able to judge and modify and make accommodations to kids. And seeing kids' faces and the way they're interacting when you're teaching is so very important to be able to respond appropriately. And so we really need to get those cameras on so that the teachers can really help the kids. And when we shorten the class periods, it's even more imperative that they have that eye contact with their teacher to be able to move the curriculum forward and to help students with their learning. So the, in the afternoon in this model, the kids will be working asynchronously, the remote kids, they will not have access to their teachers because their teachers will be teaching in-person. So that's just something to point out. So the in-person kids, this is Suzie Sample. Suzie Sample has, her last name is at the end of the alphabet. So on Mondays and Tuesdays, she would be having remote classes even though she's an in-person student because we're at a 50% model, so we can't have everybody in every day. So she's going to have her remote classes with the remote students. And then in the afternoon, she'll be working asynchronously. On Wednesday, she'll, there'll be remote office hours. She'll have an advisory check-in and then possibly some clubs depending on what her activities are and depending on what the afternoon looks like. It could be an in-person FLACs or it could be programming for her. And then on Thursdays, she's going to start her day on Thursday at 9:35 because she has advisory. And so this is to make sure that she's engaged and that she is working asynchronously. It's a check-in, you know, for, it's short and it's meant to be just a simple check-in. How is it going? You know, just to talk to the advisory together. On Friday, she will have that at 8:50. And then she'll come in in the afternoon and she'll have all of her classes in-person for 40 minutes. So we talk about that shift in, in talking about the model and the criteria and all the pieces that we've been discussing. If, if we needed to go and make the shift from that hy, this hybrid AMPM model and to go into the fully remote model, we would shift back to the 80-minute periods. To, to keep the schedule the same would be not effective for teaching and learning. To keep, to, to break the periods up like that into two 40-minute periods, some in the morning and some in the afternoon, would be really ineffective for teachers. And this would allow the curriculum to continue and every, all the kids to be together. So we would, we would shift back. So for instance, if we were in that AMPM model right now, we would be, this would be the schedule we would be using because we are fully remote. So some of the strengths with this is So some of the strengths with this is that we would know, we would have some consistency in that we would know. We would not be using the afternoon flex schedule that we currently have. We, that would not, we would either be in the 50% model, AMPM model, or we'd be fully remote. It would be one or the other. The remote and in-person students, there's equity there with time and contact with teachers. All the students will have contact with a teacher every single day. Morning advisory will happen every single day, which will allow us to take attendance and to ensure some level of accountability for students. Hopefully, UNHCAT's classes and CTE classes will have some options for the kids because the class, our classes will be occurring two times each day. Targeted learners will continue to be able to come to the building. Some of the challenges with this, we do have faculty that will continue to work from home, and so we are going to need coverage. We will likely need around four additional staff members to be able to supervise students due to the faculty that are not able to be in the building and to ensure that we have appropriate substitutes when we are, when we're missing faculty members for a variety of reasons. We do have a loss of instructional time. This is a very, this is a big, there's a few big concerns that the faculty have, and this is one of them. So we started the year with 160 minutes a week of instructional time per student, per class. And so per student, per class, we're getting to either 85 or 90, around 85 or 90 minutes. So there will be curricular changes. There's just no way around it. The loss of office hours on white days for remote learners is going to be an impact. Again, Wednesdays are going to be really important for that. Pacing and preparation are going to be a pretty big challenge for teachers because you're really prepping for, if you think about it, you're prepping for the in-person kids, you're prepping for the remote kids, and then you're prepping for the kids that are in-person and remote. So it's really like three groups of kids, and kids are shifting each day. So the prepare, preparing for that and keeping the pace of the curriculum is going to be a really big challenge and is something that the faculty, we've spoken a lot about. Classes that utilize demonstrations are also going to be a challenge. So in something like culinary, you know, where there's a lot of demonstration that takes an extended period of time, that will be impacted. So some of those classes, I know that Mr. Rashardi and the art teachers and some of the other teachers have gotten together to talk about, okay, what are some things, what are some ways, if this does happen, what are we going to have to do? What adjustments are we going to have to make? How can we continue to do the demonstrations we need to do and move the curriculum along? So that's also a concern. And again, I just, I just want to say that we can, you know, any hybrid model, whether it's this model or our current model that we have, there's always the chance that we're going to have to pause it and go back to and make that shift. And so people just need to be ready, ready for that shifting back and forth because as a high school, kids are moving. And while we're not serving lunch, which I like about this model is that there isn't a lunch period, it makes it easier to contact trace and other things. Kids are moving between classes, and so, and they're shifting teachers. So if a teacher is impacted, that could impact, you know, if a teacher's teaching five sections, that could impact 10 sections just by the nature of their schedule and what they're doing on those two days. So implementation, I would really need at least a month because not only do I have to hire people, and that's assuming I could hire people in that short period of time, but we really need to do, we need to educate people about the model. We need to talk to parents and kids about what it is so that they have a full understanding. I would want to survey the parents and survey the kids because, you know, one of the things in some conversations that I've had with kids is sometimes the kids, parents will say one thing and the kids will say the other thing, and then they need time to have that conversation together. Because as kids get older, we know that they have their own opinions and thoughts, and they would like to be heard, and they would like to be part of that conversation, and they would like to be part of that decision-making process. So we need time for that. And then I think parents are going to have to re-register their kids so that we have a definite number. We know this is how many kids are coming in the building. These are the students coming in the building. So that I can then go through with administration, and as a team, we can literally count kids in classrooms to ensure that every classroom has, only has the number of students that it can be accommodated in that room. Transportation, Lisa would need time. I would want to work with Doris around food services to see how we can get, make sure that kids that would like breakfast and lunch and what we can do for those students. And faculty really are going to need time. They need time to get ready for this because this is a change. We have to make curriculum changes. There'll be instructional changes that we'll need to shift. And there's a lot of work that we'll have to go into that. And I want to just say that the end of the semester, because we have so many semester classes, there's a lot that goes into that for faculty. There's a lot of time. You know, kids are relearning and reassessing. There are kids that are, we, there's a lot of accommodating that faculty have made for students, allowing them a lot of leeway with due dates and sort of, and trying to help them along. So the end of the semester is going to be a crunch for them already. And then I just want to make sure we're being respectful of their time and what they need to be able to shift from the end of one semester and the beginning of a new model. And so I think that looking at the calendar is something that's worth doing when thinking about the implementation of this. And then we really, one of the questions that I keep getting asked by faculty is, well, what's the threshold? Like, where are all these thresholds? If we don't have a lot of parents and kids that say they want to do this, are we going to make this, all these changes to instruction and curriculum? And how many, you know, where is that for us? Like, what is that threshold? And so that's why I asked that question tonight is because I told them that I would ask that question. So, and that, at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Denise?
First of all, thank you. I mean, you've just come to us with all these different models, and just, I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and creativity in trying to come up with these models. I know it's not easy. I have two questions. So first of all, I certainly, makes sense to me if we do go fully remote, we revert back to basically what the current schedule is, correct? Is what it more or less would be if we had to go fully, you know, remote again?
Currently, we're in, we are in the afternoon flex model.
That's, yeah.
But yes, it's pretty, it's pretty, very much close to what we're currently doing.
Yeah, I get that. But, so, but what would happen? I guess my question is, is let's say you had a math teacher that had, came down with COVID. And so those students would have to, you know, that class would have to go remote, or not class, but let's say that impacted all those particular math classes. You couldn't, you'd have to stay in that same schedule. I guess my point is if it was just a small cohort that had to go remote for quarantine purposes or what have you, you couldn't go to this full remote schedule. You know what I mean? I'm just trying to get a sense of how that would work.
Yep, so the, the full remote, the 80-minute class period would be if we were shifting as a school.
Right, right. But if it was a particular, either class or, you know, like I say, if it was a teacher and it impacted all that teacher's classes, it would just have to stay, it would be fully remote, but it would have to stay with that same.
So if there was a case, if there was a case that would require quarantining, then the people that would need to quarantine would be in quarantine. They would work remotely. And then if we needed to have coverage for that teacher, then we would work internally with those additional people and with the department to find that coverage that we needed to have.
Be very similar to what we do in the elementary right now when a staff member's on quarantine. That staff member's still teaching from remote, the kids are there.
Yeah, so you just have to get covered.
This is why we were asking for the extra staffing so we could cover the classroom when that happened.
So currently, we have, we have five teachers that wouldn't be able to return. So my request is for four. And then any additional people that would be out, we would have to work internally to be able to cover, and that would, that would, you know, we'd work with those four people depending on, it's like a puzzle, who's free at this period and who's free at that period, and then you try to fit it all together. It's a big puzzle.
Okay. And then the second thing I have is I'm having a little bit of a hard time figuring out how the fully remote students, it's not repetitive. Because I get that they stay remote the whole time and that they have one group of students that they're with on Monday, Tuesday, and a different group that they're with on Thursday, Friday. But I'm thinking, wouldn't it be the same material that's getting covered those two times? And that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
I'm trying to think of which slide would make the most sense. So Megan and I actually talked about this this morning too. And this is a common question that I have had when I've, when I've, so if I'm, if I'm a, if I'm, if I'm a mythology teacher and I'm, and I have a topic that I'm teaching, then the kids that are, I think this is probably the easiest one to look at for this, Denise. So if, if my, as a teacher, I'm teaching the same thing theoretically, it's going to be different just because it's just going to be different. The way you instruct is going to be different if you're remote and in-person. So, but you're going to be teaching the same thing in the morning that you are in the afternoon, and then the next day, you have new content.
Okay.
Does that, and you're teaching different things in the morning and the afternoon than you were the day before.
So the idea is that they're going to cover the same material on whether the students are remote or in-person that day, they're going to try and stick to covering the same material so that, let's say we're talking Monday, Tuesday, then when they get to Thursday, Friday, it's different material.
Yeah. Now, I have to say, there are some classes, some advanced study classes, there's some AP classes and some classes like that where the time is going to be really difficult. And so those teachers may ask the kids to, the remote, the kids that are in-person, they may ask them to be, like, there may be a day where they said, you know what? I need all of you together. We're all going to meet A period remotely. So there may be some teachers that ask the kids to do that, but that's up to them. That's based on their needs with what they're doing in their class. That is not an expectation. But I do want to say that, that there, there may be times where teachers ask all the kids to join in remotely for one reason or another. And it just comes to mind for me, something like an AP class or an advanced study class or a running start class. Megan, I think you wanted.
Oh, no, I was just going to help to explain with the students, with the remote students not having their repeated schedule, but yeah.
So I noticed that on Suzie Sample's schedule, granted, she has to be at her advisory in the morning, but she has, she has class on Monday morning and she has class on Friday afternoon, whereas the first half of the alphabet has Monday morning where they just have advisory, and then they're done at noon on Fridays. So great for the folks that are in the first half of the alphabet.
So we could look at moving, flipping it around a little if people wanted to.
An observation when I ran across that slide.
I hadn't thought about that.
I think that it would have been nice to be able to try to find a way that was somewhere in between that preserved a higher amount of class time, but I think that this is, this is a great solution for moving forward. So I think this is a way to, a great way to look at this. And I'm wondering, when you do the surveys, if you get less than 50% of students that want to be in-person, does that then change this because you wouldn't need two groups to be in the building?
So, I thought about that. And so then, there's a couple pieces with that. One is, it could, but then does that impact the way people would have responded? Does that make sense? Because now you're increasing the amount, you're increasing the amount of days that a kid is in school. So some parents may say, you know, I really like this because they'll go in here these two days, and then I have this break of time, you know, so that if there is something that happens, there's like this time period to know if there was contact and like, and so they may be making a decision based on the number of days. Or some parents might say, you know what? That's, I don't, if it was every day, yes, but since it's only two days, no. So I don't, that's a really good question. I don't have an answer to that.
It also varies by class, right? If you have a.
It's not going to be half of each class, right?
Yeah.
We also don't have the same expectation that we've seen at the middle school and elementary. I think the issue of, you know, Al's daughters and, you know, junior, right? So, you know, Al may, and Janet may say, you're going to school, and she's going to say, Dad, Mom, I don't want to. And that will, I think the numbers are going to change based on the fact that our high school students are able to articulate what they want to do with their parents. And so I think that's the threshold question that the staff is coming at. You know, if it's a very small percentage, then we have to come back here and say, is this effort worth that? That cost of the change? And so I think that's a really important thing for us to kind of park in the back of our brain because if the board supports this model, which I think is an awesome piece of work by Suzanne and her staff, I think that we really have to let her do the work to find out what the real numbers are because this is a significant change. And if it's very few students who want to participate in-person, then it's a change we have to come back and talk about.
Yeah, I was just going to say, speaking to the threshold percentages, I think that those are, in speaking with students, those are going to be flexible with time. So obviously, right now, all the students I've spoken to, pretty, the general consensus is going in right now is absolutely not a good idea, and I don't think anybody here disagrees with that. And of course, implementation would not take place tomorrow if we were to adopt this model. So when I was speaking with Ms. Philippone in our meeting this morning, we were talking about in those student surveys, including a question like, what day would you want to come back in this model? Okay, would it be February 1st, which is like the earliest identified date, or then March 1st, you know, which is a date that, assuming everything goes well between now and March and, you know, the spring, we start to see things open up and hopefully, you know, the vaccine gets a little more distributed, you'd see more interest in getting students in the building. So in considering this model, I think that having the set as the framework for what we know we're going to do when we reach that implementation threshold, but then understanding that it's going to take some time for us to get there. But I think eventually, a majority of students are going to want to go back in the building in whatever fashion we decide. It's just a matter of when, not necessarily if. So the later into the year you get, the more likely you are to have students wanting to come back in. And if you already have the model squared away ahead of time, it makes it that much easier to then come into the school.
I think you've wrestled a beast here and that this is, this is, what do we say? The least bad option. It hits a lot of our goals and minima. I'm wondering about the asynchronous time, and I can absolutely see the teachers' concern about losing that amount of instructional time. And it's not only a half a day of asynchronous time. One of those asynchronous times is before the student has gotten the instruction for the day, and the other one is after they've gotten the instruction for the day. So it's, you know, it's really complicated. And I wonder what support and professional development and also kind of transparency and accountability we have with the teachers so that that time is being well-spent, you know, from the, that's the biggest concern we hear from the parents as well, right? How do we use this asynchronous time?
I think it's a great question. You know, I think that, I think how the teachers ask the kids to use the time and expect the kids to use the time, and parents ask and expect may be different than the way the kids decide to use it also, because we also need to remember that they're teenagers and, and they, they are, you know, a lot of the kids are working at home alone. So we may, the best intentions may be for a student to work on their social studies project, and there are guidelines for them to do that in the afternoon during their one, you know, from 11:25 to 3:05. For Suzie, you know, she may need to be working on her world cultures project, and the teacher may have outlined all of that for her, and she may decide not to do it. And there's really, you know, this is one of our biggest struggles. It's a parental struggle, it's a teacher's struggle, it's, you know, that is one of the biggest challenges. So, you know, we're going to work on that. We're going to see if there's ways that we can do it. But the reality is that the teachers are teaching during that time, and so they are not going to be able to be available to those kids to be able to check in on them. So we're going to have to, we'll have to work on that. We'll have to figure that out. Now, having said that, we will still have targeted learners in the building. So if there are kids that are truly, truly struggling and need to be in the building during that asynchronous time, we can, we can work with people to try to figure that out, to see how we can, see how we can accommodate that.
Can I follow up that question, Megan? I'm going to put you on the spot, okay? And, you know, one of the things about, they teach you in law schools, don't ask questions you don't know the answer to. I do not know the answer to this, so this could be a bomb question. But in terms of your teaching assignments, the the things that you have to do for your teacher, how much would you say are multiple day assignments? In other words, you're going into a class, the teacher is laying out the work for a project or a multi-week assignment. How much does how much does that happen to you?
I would say, so it's actually interesting because before the COVID pandemic hit, we had our new schedule, which had the blue and white days. And so when you had, you kind of had almost asynchronous time already built in there because you weren't having every single one of your classes every day. If you had your A period on Monday, that then wouldn't be due until Wednesday. And so in that way, teachers were assigning, you know, maybe two nights' worth of homework. If you're in like a math class, you'd have to do that many more math problems or longer responses, longer projects. And it was already with the intention that, okay, you have this day to do it. You have the next day to do it, and then it will be due on the Wednesday. So students have already been navigating asynchronous learning, at least at the high school, because of our previous models. And the other thing that I talked about with Ms. Philippone in the meeting this morning was despite the fact that teachers won't be available during that asynchronous time, any student who is in that that alphabetical group and in that class, they will all be available for each other. So it is not as if students will be without resources during those time. And I think that that's also equally as important to to highlight.
The reason I ask the question is because K through eight, I think UC's question is absolutely a dead on question because of the age and maturity of the children. And and I did not know how you answered, but the answer that you gave is exactly what I was hoping to hear, that you're already in a mode of multiple day lessons, projects, expectations and writing and so forth. So that the the what we perceive as asynchronous time negative isn't necessarily negative at your age group.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not ideal, but it's also not not a deficit like we see in the in the K through four.
Yeah, and I spoke with the Student Senate this this morning. And they were talking about the difference between asynchronous time with models like these versus asynchronous time in the spring when it was almost completely asynchronous. And of course, I don't think any student, regardless of what grade you're in, your maturity level, likes that kind of asynchronous. But with this setup, students already do kind of have a rhythm in place, I guess. Or most of the students I've spoken to already have a rhythm in place for this, not just because of COVID and how they've been dealing with that, but also because of just our previous schedules. I mean, we don't have, we never really had a like, you have your classes every single day schedule.
Thank you, Megan.
My, you know, sample of one, what I've seen.
Now, two.
Two. It's like as you move, especially for juniors and seniors, they're more used to the use of asynchronous time and and projects and other things. So it it doesn't seem to be as big a deal.
And I think it'll prepare you for college because in college, you might have classes only on Tuesday and Thursday. And and the rest of the time is asynchronous, but you're, you know, you have work to do and you have to learn how to do it. So, yeah.
So I just want to reinforce something that UC said at the beginning of the meeting. The these dates that in both Jay's model and in Suzanne's model tonight are possible start dates in that we would need to come back to the board and say, you know, we're ready to implement this model. I also want to reinforce what Megan said in terms of Jay having a model ready and Suzanne having a model ready means we're ready as a system to make a switch when the COVID numbers indicate that we're all comfortable doing it. And so I think this is what the community has been asking us for. What's the plan to get kids back? What are the criteria we're going to use to make judgments? And so once this piece is in place, then I think the newsletter that goes home to our parents next week will generate zillions of questions, but it answers those fundamental questions that the community has been asking of us now for a couple of months.
So Dr. Morris, what what should be the step that you would like the board to take to get to move forward?
If the board is comfortable, I would love the board to do the same thing they did for Jay and give Suzanne permission to work through the implementation stage of this model, not to implement it with the goal of February 1st. But to to let the world know, this is where we're going to go as a school system as soon as we possibly can and allow her to do all the pre-work so that that when we're ready to drop the hammer, you're ready to drop the hammer, she can, it'll be a turnkey operation, if you will.
And I'd be happy to come back in a couple of weeks and let you know how that process is going and where I am in the planning.
So would the motion be to direct Suzanne to move forward with this model and then to report on her progress in two weeks?
That'd be great.
Do you want to add that the possible February 1st implementation date into the motion? Does that matter?
I don't think we need that. I think we can explain that that this is our hope and and goal. And 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 then then we don't get into the same issue again that UC indicated at the very beginning, will we confuse our parents? Because, you know, that that is important that we try to message clearly. And obviously, next week with the newsletter, I'll make, I'll reemphasize both the middle school and the high school as these are goals that we have. But the most important goal is we have a model that we're ready to put in place.
So could somebody make the motion?
I guess I'll make a motion to allow Suzanne to investigate the implementation of the 50% AMPM hybrid model and come back to and talk to us in two weeks.
Okay, moved by Al, second by Brian. Further discussion? No, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. You have you have the go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Suzanne.
All right. Finance committee, the new charge for this year.
I saw, you know, at the risk of pushing ahead, I really hadn't asked Brian or Michael this. But I, you know, when we formed the original committee, our charge was to help with us to to come up with the fiscal 2122 budget. And the board has approved the, at least preliminarily, the budget. And really, the work that's left is the language on the warrant articles and the public hearing presentation. I I think that for the second semester, there were two things that I really put down that I think we should look at. The first is, you know, we we did this budget, there was no COVID. And so things have changed pretty radically since then. And we've now at least allowed Suzanne to investigate a new high school model and Jay to do a middle school model, each of which involves staffing. And I'm not sure potentially other things that may be in there. So for the short term, it would allow the committee to really come up with a report of what the costs of the models are and and any other changes that are coming to the second semester models. And then the second part of that, of course, is where is the funding source and the budget that it's coming from? So that's the short term one. The longer term one, we, when we originally did the budget, the projection was that we were going to give $400,000 back to the communities. And so as we move forward, the question is, if if we are either under or over that, what will we do with the targeted fund balance? And so there are two warrants that we're going to talk about next. One is to increase the amount that could go into the to the emergency fund. And the second, I assume, is the 125,000 is to put into paying for the solar system. But I would like it if if we as a committee could sit down and wrestle what the best option is for the money. It's like, kind of like what we were doing with the CIP and that. Let us bounce around the ideas of where the best place to put any excessive money goes in, whether it's CIP, whether it's reserve fund or where it goes. And then that would allow us to come back in May with recommendations as we have a clearer sense of what exactly the number is. And we could present that to the board with options. And I think that would really help as opposed to us just suddenly in May coming up with, what do we do with this money? So so that's what the charge was.
So I have. So the one thing I would like to add is in the original charge, we had a sentence that in order to support transparency in the process, the committee will keep detailed minutes and provide those minutes to the full board. And that has fallen off for what happened in the fall. And I really, really think it's important, certainly important to me as someone who doesn't attend the meetings to have that. So I'd ask that that be added to the charge and that it would be followed.
So yeah, I so what I want to add is, so I, so every other committee, like, for example, in your policy committee, you have somebody come in and do the minutes. And I would like our committee to have the same opportunity. So I'm not going to chair the finance committee and write the minutes, too. I think that's an excessive thing to ask me to do. And I just want us to be able to have the same resources that, for example, your committee has as well. So I think that's fair. There was one time it was not done. It was not my fault. I've taken full responsibility for it. Everything else is, despite the fact that I am only chairing the committee, I don't know any other committee chairman who has sat and written minutes other than me being held to that standard. So I'm only asking for the same resources as every other committee will be done and at which point we will have the minutes.
Yeah, and and I I agree with that. And but I also, you know, I think it is important to have them. So we do, I feel like, need to have a way to be able to find, you know, I don't know.
We will. I mean, again, it's the same, again, I I would not have asked you at the policy committee for you to take your own minutes. And I so I ask that we only have the same respect as a committee.
Is that doable?
Yeah, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
Okay, so are you okay?
Can I just add another thought, too? I would like the report to come back to the board on the first meeting of May. And and Sue's probably sitting back there wanting to kick me. The reason that I would like it at the first meeting of May is because there tends to be a lot of deliberation and conversation at this level when we get to the full board. And, you know, when the committee is making recommendations, it's not going to happen, you know, overnight. So bringing it to the first meeting gives us time to have the conversation about how we're going to close the books for the year.
Yep.
Sue, you okay with that? Did you want to kick me? Okay.
Does that have to be part of this or is that?
I just think due date, deliverable is always part of the motion.
With a report with a report due to the board on May 1st, by May 1st?
Fifth.
I'm perfect with that. Okay, does somebody want to move this charge with Denise's sentence with about the minutes and with the delivery date of May 1st? Brian?
I will move it as stated.
Okay, moved by Brian, second by.
I'll second that.
By Michael, okay. Further discussion? I think your committee has been probably the most useful committee that we've had. So I really thank you for your work. And so, ready to vote on this? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. This charge is approved. So thank you, Al. So business administrator, well, student rep.
Thank you. Yeah, so just a couple of things, I guess, to touch on. So as I mentioned before, I spoke with the Student Senate and I've also reached out to students, just other students in general. And of course, the general consensus with coming back to school is, you know, now is not the time. But as we've talked about these remote learning plans, I think that students will definitely feel more confident going into the spring that there is a possible way for us to come back. I think that that clears up a lot of the the confusion and uncertainty, which is what a lot of students seem to be having right now. And then the other things that were mentioned at the Student Senate meeting were camera usage. The Student Senate is really working to get students to be using their cameras more and more frequently, especially with classes that are more discussion based and advisory. And so in the implementation of that new hybrid model, camera usage is really important. And so we're trying to get a student kind of led response to be getting students to use their cameras. And as far as the school cannot like mandate camera usage, but the Student Senate, I know has, they have their own committee working on getting that information out to students. And then the end of the semester is the 22nd of January. So mid midterms and finals for those semester long classes are coming up. The Student Senate also spoke about academic support for students during this time, what that could entail, because we are, you know, at a fully remote model right now. Students are trying to get student-led tutoring and academic support done as well as implementing new ways for teachers to schedule meetings with students so that students aren't missing that that one-on-one time. Because with the remote office hours, it can be tricky for students to all, all students to meet their needs during those times if a teacher is meeting with students from another class or they just don't have enough time or they they come in late at the end of the meeting. So those are all things that we spoke, I spoke about with the Student Senate this morning. And then also, some students mentioned mental health being a part of the conversation again, that they feel that it has sort of slipped to the side recently, but it is more important than ever as we move into the kind of the heart of the winter. And that, you know, we're talking about these coming back in person plans. But as of, you know, the next couple of weeks, certainly the next month, we won't be back in person and students will be remote and there's less opportunities to get outside and see your friends. And so that social emotional piece is still pretty critical during this time. And students really feel that if there's any way that we can start bringing that back into our conversations as well, ways we can support students with their mental health as we try to get through the this this winter, looking ahead to the future. And I think that that.
Was that coming from the Senate or was that coming from?
That was coming from a student who reached out to me specifically. I kind of said, I did like a thing on, informally, just on Instagram. It didn't reach all students, but that was a student who responded to me. She said that she had been speaking to some of her friends and other classmates about it, too. And I don't.
But when you get that kind of contact, please encourage them to contact their counselor.
Yeah, of course, yeah. And yeah, the students are, they they're aware of all of the resources that they have and have become pretty familiar with it since we've gotten to a point in the year where we've been using them very frequently. But yeah. Yeah, of course.
Can I ask what some of the strategies that you're deploying to try to get students to turn their cameras on?
Yeah, so the committee, I'm not on the committee, but the committee did report at the Student Senate meeting. I know that they're coming up with a video that will be played during the announcements. And the announcements are played during advisory every week, encouraging students to use their cameras. And then also, I know that with this model coming in, trying to have students getting, engaging in their classes more means having their cameras on. So teachers are really asking students to have their cameras on, but also having other students getting students, you know, being like, hey, let's all turn our cameras on, getting in breakout rooms, turning their cameras on and advocating for each other and leading by example.
Megan, have you seen the change in practice since you guys started having this conversation?
I would say, I mean, my own personal habits actually have changed. I feel that I am using my camera now more in my classes. And I think that there are, there are students who are, you know, I would say, it is not consistent with like camera usage, like per student, like on a day-to-day basis. There are the students who will always have their cameras on and the students who will always have their cameras off. But there are some students who kind of alternate between, oh, they feel comfortable having it on, and oh, they don't really feel comfortable having it on. And I think what I've seen is more frequently, students are going to turn it on than they are going to have it off. But still, there's that that kind of fluidity.
You may have thought about this, but a couple of years ago, we had a pretty successful campaign at the high school where we were talking about suicide prevention. And we had different groups of kids advocating. So we, you know, we had athletes, we had athletes, we had NHS, we had. Remember that Suzanne, when we actually engaged the kids who who other kids look up to? So we tried to get a variety of of students to become advocates for your mental health and preventing suicides. So I would suggest that if you if the if you if the Senate hasn't thought of that idea, that was that was really highly effective for a couple of years ago.
No, I think that would be great, probably getting groups like SALT together for the student athletic like leadership.
Even just seniors to freshmen, that kind of thing. Seniors have incredible influence on freshmen normally because.
Yes.
We're in, but even in this environment, seniors could have an amazing impact on freshmen. I just throw that as another example.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to like the 2021 warrant articles, do we approve those now? Have we approved those? I'm trying to think, what's the action we need to take on?
Public hearings.
What?
Public hearings next.
Okay, so we, I just need to assign those for the deliberative session? Okay, I actually have your assignments. Ready?
When do they do?
They're due at the deliberative session. And you'll see I've taken the notion of delegation to the hardest point that I could take it. So Article 3, it's the main budget. So Article 3, this is the main budget, would be Al. Denise, I'd like you to do the bus drivers, okay? I know you weren't on the committee, but the committee didn't really meet with them either, so. Dan, you do the support, Article 5.
Okay.
Support, okay? Then Brian, could you take 6?
Sure.
And Michael, you take 7?
I'd be glad to.
And Uzi, if you could take the presentation of the outstanding volunteer. Is that all right?
I don't know what it means to take, but I'm happy to.
Well, it means, it means you kind of go up and read this kind of tribute to, you know, I mean, somebody else, I don't know who writes it, but-
I'll explain it.
Great, I'm in.
Okay, okay.
It's the easiest job. The newbie always gets it.
Yeah, the newest person always gets it.
Sweet thing, you know, yeah.
I got my first here, too.
Okay. Public hearing discussion, is that, what is that?
I just wanted to recognize that the, the board had the option, and we never really got into it at finance, other than passing. We didn't have a deep discussion about it. But because of COVID, there's this remote option. Sue and I reviewed it, and it is so doggone complicated and has so many pits and peaks and valleys to it and curves that we felt that the remote option was really, would be incredibly difficult to implement. So we wanted to do deliberative session in a traditional way, meaning that we'd use the auditorium. But obviously, you know, this 530-seat auditorium only can hold a maximum of 90, I think it's 93, that Alex told me. So we would need to have a, an extra room. We would use the gymnasium as our extra room. And then the law requires us to have a space for those who refuse to wear masks. And so I, we would, we would use the music room behind us. And in each case, we would have a microphone and video, so it would be live. And just in terms of questions, we just have to make sure the moderator says, does anybody in the music room have a question? Does anybody in the, in the gymnasium have a question? You know, traditionally, the biggest turnout we ever had, actually, Brian reminded me, was last year because of the middle school. If it follows tradition, then this room should be adequate, except that we definitely still have to have a room for anybody who refuses to wear a mask. We don't have to in public hearing, because we're not, the law is very specific on us. We can't deny somebody their voice if they don't want to wear a mask in deliberative session. So deliberative session is unique. Public hearing, I can still require people to wear masks. Our board meetings, we can require to have people wear masks, but we do have to create an option. I think that's the most practical and feasible way of going forward with the deliberative session. I just wanted to put, put that out there so that if, you know, somebody asks you, why aren't we doing it through drive-through? A superintendent I talked to that did it last spring, they said it was a nightmare. It's just so hard to manage. And I think that, you know, using our own space and social distancing and taking care of our populace the way we always would anyway is the, is the way to go. So I just wanted to make sure the board knew that that was the direction both Sue and I wanted to go.
Just clarification, I got a little confused. So for the bud, the hearing, the budget hearing, we won't need this room for the no masks? That will just be able to be okay?
I mean, traditionally, we might have-
I know.
-three dozen people show up.
Right, okay.
Two dozen of our staff.
Okay.
I think we're okay there. I just, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on why I was doing it the way I was doing it. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board has. Comfortable? Thank you.
So I realize I didn't have a motion to approve the presentation of the warrant articles. So could I get a motion to approve the assignment as I, Brian?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Brian, the second by?
Al's second.
All those in favor? Six, seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Thank you. Sorry about the admission. School board committee updates?
I have one, actually. It's not a school board committee. So Maggie Morrison is the sustainability coordinator, and we're going to have a meeting next week. But she came to the integrated, the Durham Integrated Waste Management Committee. And so it's kind of wild when you think about the sustainability. A couple of years ago, we were talking about water bottles and taking, you know, plastic out of, plastic water bottles out. But I think, you know, we've come a long way since then. And I think really the goal of New Hampshire was to have a 40% reduction of solid waste going into landfills. And of course, they set no target on that. But, you know, and so that really inspired the district to put in heavy recycling.
Okay.
And unfortunately, recycling markets have, have bottomed out. Commodity prices are really poor. And so the real focus has begun to shift on what we can control, which is organics or composting. It's, it's heavy, and it makes up up to a quarter of the solid waste. And so the real movement forward is how can we end up? You'd love to have a composting facility, but as I was telling Suzanne at the beginning of the meeting, it's that it would take years to actually get the permitting through. And so what we're really looking for is a regional hub where we can drop off compost, and then the compost can be picked up and taken either up to Maine, to AgroMaine, where it's turned into energy, or to Black Earth, where it's taken into compost. But it has to be local, and we have to be able to do it for under $81 a ton, which is what our current tipping fee is. And so in order to do that, we need to find a hub facility, and we need to get all the communities to work together, which means Durham, Lee, Madbury, and UNH, and as well as ORCSD, to get enough critical mass to make it economically viable. And so what Maggie is really asking is for permission to really talk to each of those governing bodies. And so she's, I, at the town council meeting, whatever our last one was, we, we of Durham approved it that Maggie could come talk with us and say, yes, let's go investigate this facility. So what I'm really asking is a motion to allow the sustainability coordinator to speak to the town officials of Durham, Lee, Madbury, UNH, and I guess she already speaks for ORCSD, so just those four governing bodies.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
Second, Uzi? Discussion, questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Thank you, Al. Other committees, yeah?
So the long-range planning committee, we did have a member step forward, who may, may, it's, it's very tentative, but there's been, someone did step forward who said that she would be interested in trying to lead the group. So she had thrown out some dates in January, which I don't remember off the top of my head, but we'll see if we can get things going in that regard, yeah.
Brian, you're going to do?
Well, did you forget the approval list for coaches and volunteers?
That was unanimous.
Unanimous was clubs and activity sites.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Good catch.
Oh, it wasn't in there, okay.
My mistake. Okay, I need a motion then to approve the list of coaches and volunteers?
I thought that was a separate list?
Motion to approve the list for coaches and volunteers.
Moved by Brian, second by? Al? Question on that? Hearing that, all in favor, please raise your hand. Five in favor, the student rep in favor. Opposed? Abstentions? Two abstentions, okay. Sorry. Thanks, thanks, Brian.
So there had been two committees that, that Brian and Uzi sit on. The one that they're both on is the concurrent learning committee. We had our first meeting. I thought the meeting was very engaging. I thought it was a great conversation. I just want to, you know, state for the public record that the goal here is to create an option, not to create a mandate. And so I thought it went really, really well. If you guys want to contribute, I just think it did. We did lose one member because of the member thought that we were going down a different path, and I tried to articulate that that was not the path we were going. But I, you know, I think, I actually enjoyed the conversation.
It's a great group, and as Brian has pointed out, the, you know, the, the goal is really to understand the good, the bad, and the ugly, to be quite upfront about the challenges, and to share, you know, ways that others have had success in a, you know, in a situation where there's no silver bullet, and to allow individuals to look further into that toolkit if they so choose.
Yeah.
And you've also gone outside to find more teachers that are doing it that are successful with it. I've already found two just yesterday alone to my district that are willing to talk, and there's a few more.
Teachers call room and Zoom, don't they? Isn't that?
What's that?
I've heard that expression, room and Zoom for concurrent learning?
No, I never heard that. Yeah, so I just wanted to reemphasize that this is an issue, an effort to create a option for our staff to consider. And then the other piece is, you know, Uzi and I serve on the racism committee.
Denise.
And Denise. And the conversations are great, and I just really enjoy them. But I did articulate a bit of a frustration on my, my part because mostly I want to talk, and then I want to do. And we haven't got to the do stage, and so I'm getting a little frustrated. But the conversations are rich, and they're wonderful, and people are so committed. But that's, I mean, you guys can add to that, too. I don't know how you, how you guys are feeling.
I just add that there is some interest in taking a look at the racism, anti-racism policy that we have. So we, there were a couple of members that just wanted to kind of look at it and make some suggestions, so.
Yeah, we had a rich conversation around the policy. I thought it was fantastic, and I just wanted to create a work committee right there and get it done. And of course, that doesn't how this committee works, so we're getting there. There'll be, I mean, I talked to Michelle about it today, and she said the goal is to create a list of, you know, things that we need to work on and have people divide and get to work. But it's a really great committee to listen to. Our student reps are absolutely fabulous. The community members who originally created the petition are super engaging. And our faculty, Jacqueline, Vivian from the high school, and Val from the middle school are so committed to this work. So Todd and I were talking, actually, this didn't come up in the committee meeting, but one of the things that we have fallen flat on is the whole issue of trying to attract people of color into the district. And I think I recall, Michael, you saying, we just have to do it differently. We have to go out. And so I actually talked to Todd today about we should need, we need to call the colleges, find out when they're doing their job fairs. And we go. And, you know, we stand there and try to attract people, just, you know, old-fashioned way, because the application process is not working. But if you think about it, this spring, we have a real opportunity with the, because of the retirement incentive, to, you know, really make a difference. So that's what I said to Todd, you ready to do a road trip? And he said, sure, if you want to. So at some point, you might, might find us disappear for a week so that we can do that work more directly. Because the, even though the recruitment people that we are contacting with who are very dedicated to this work as well, this is, we're just coming up with, you know, empty, empty hands, so we're going to, we're going to do it differently.
So I think some of the frustration, Jim, is just COVID-related, because it blankets everything, and it's, I think it's impacted a lot of other committees that I'm on. But I think the effort that you put in now will really bear fruit as we come out of COVID.
Well, that's what Todd-
And it comes more to the forefront.
Todd said, yeah, great, Jim, you want to do this, and it'll probably be all on Zoom. So, but even if it's on Zoom, at least we'll make some connections.
We don't talk about this anymore, but you guys may forget that we're, we're still building a middle school. We never talk about it anymore because of all that's been going on. But I'm still meeting weekly with Jim and the construction crew and-
We're officially 32% done.
Yep.
So the poster that's in my office that people see when they come in, I had Wendy put a giant 32% on it. So any, and every time we get a bill, the percentage goes up, so we'll change it every time we get a bill. So monthly, it'll change. It's one-third done.
But I did get, and I don't know if, I think you guys might have been on the email chain, there, we still have the Go Vote people that we haven't been able to bring in. At some point, we're going to need to bring them in and recognize them. And I think we're all talking about, we all have still our signs and postcards, and we're looking to have everybody sign them, you know, just because we're all part of something that was really big and-
Yeah, Megan said she was going to start middle school over instead of going to college because it's a new school.
It's cheaper.
And we have a bunch of, a bunch of postcards, too, which I think you said the art department might make a collage out of.
Get a lot of postcards.
We got a lot of postcards, so. But, you know, it's just something that-
Who came up with that number?
It's just something that, you know, we, because of COVID, we've never really had the time to enjoy the big win that we had. And at some point, I want to remind everyone, at some point, if we can do that when it gets, we get out of this mess.
Soon as we're all injected. The, there was a lot of material left from filling the music hall seats, which is they, they lay down a layer of styrofoam before they pour the concrete. And the contractor offered to provide it to our art teachers for sculpture, sculptures. I mean, the pieces are as big as we are, so could give our kids a real opportunity to do something radically different because they could have full-length sculptures. So contractors have been amazing.
So public comment, I think our public has vanished. So we have the closing dates as indicated here, so we meet next week. And so we need to go into non-public session. I'm wondering if we can make the motion. And I anticipate this to be very brief, just to get us, get us started on the superintendent evaluation. So I think it, I guess I can make the motion. I moved to go into non-public session RS 91 hyphen A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, on the grounds of number three, discussion matters that are likely to, you know, affect the reputation other than a member of the school board, so. So I make that motion, can I have a second? Second. Roll call.
Denise Day, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
UCI Terrell, yes.
Brian Stisner, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Okay. So where should we go?
Am I allowed to leave?
Should we go back there? Should we stay here? Should people just disappear?
Is everybody else gonna leave? They give me.